This regular meeting of the Board of Education for November 14th, 2017 is called to order. Welcome to everyone present and to the television viewers. Any item that's going to be voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the Board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. As a reminder, we have a PPS Ombudsman, Judy Martin, attending all our regular Board meetings. Where's Judy? There she is with her hand up over there. Specifically Judy will be here to listen to the public comments and if appropriate, provide additional support to families who need or want it. Judy can be reached at (503) 916-3045 or ombudsman@pps.net. Also this evening, our General Counsel is out. We do have interpreters with us this evening and I'd like to ask them to come forward, introduce themselves in the language they'll be interpreting and inform the audience where they'll be standing in the auditorium should anyone need their assistance.
Hola, buenas tardes, me llamo Lucía Cabrejos, soy intérprete en español. Si me necesitan voy a estar allá al fondo, gracias.
Doble viernes, me llamo Sergi Emelnik. Yo hablo por russo. Si alguien necesita ayuda con el lenguaje russo, por favor. Yo estaré en la parte trasera de este salón. Gracias.
Great, thank you. We were going to kick off this evening with recognizing our outstanding biology teacher, but she was not able to make it tonight. Hopefully, we're going to have her at a future Board meeting. In addition, our agenda item on Marysville mindfulness will now be at our December 5th Board meeting. They would like to have more of their staff here. So, that moves us right on to, this is National School Psychology Awareness Week. The Board would like to acknowledge November 13th to 17th as National School Psychology Awareness Week. School psychologists provide a range of services to support students' academic achievement and social-emotional well-being. The goal of the week is to illuminate the many ways that thoughtful action leads to positive outcomes for students, staff, and the school community at large. And we want to thank all of our school psychologists for all the work. And very appropriate tonight, I'm going to ask Vice Chair Espaza Brown to speak briefly. She has a special connection to this topic.
Yes, I do want to personally thank all of our school psychologists. And I am a special ed teacher, was, and a school psychologist, so I know how multifaceted that role is. And school psychologists play a role in, really for the whole child. They are mental health experts, they're experts in teaching and learning, and they're experts in assessment. They do more than just test. That's kind of been what they've been known for, for decades, but the role is much, much greater than that. And I know particularly in our districts, all of the wonderful programs that many of our school psychologists have taken the lead on, and the extra training that they have. So please make this a special week to thank your school psychologists. And I'm sure that many of you have had experiences where they've helped support your children, your neighbors' children. And again, I want to really express gratitude for all of the wonderful ones that we have within our district. Thanks.
Thank you Director Espaza Brown. We are now going to start our general public comment. I just want to explain tonight, we have our general public comment as part of our regular meeting. We also, there is a separate set of public comment that's connected to the vote on the middle school resolution. So if you signed up for that one, it will happen during the time of the Board meeting in which we are going to be voting on the middle school resolution. Before we begin the public comment period, I'd like to review our guidelines for public comment. The Board thanks the community for taking the time to come here this evening and provide comments to the Board. We value public input as it informs our work and we look forward to hearing the community's thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a Board is to actively listen with our electronic devices turned off. Board members do not respond to comments or questions during public comment, but our Board Office will follow up on the issues raised during public testimony. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration for others. Complaints about individual employees should be directed to the Superintendent's Office as a personnel matter. Those speaking tonight will have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please start by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes of testimony, a green light will appear. Then when there's a minute remaining, the yellow light will appear. And then when the red light appears, we ask that you wrap up your comments. Again, we appreciate your input and thank you for your cooperation. And with that, I'd like to ask Ms. Hewson to go ahead and call the first two individuals on our list tonight.
Liliana Eide and Joseph Clyde.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Liliana Eide, E-I-D-E, and I'm an eighth grader at Oakley Green in the dual-language immersion program. I'm here to talk to you about the issues we have at Oakley Green and ways to try to improve the school system for us and for students after us. They say that everyone should stand up for their rights, that's why I'm here. When I was in sixth grade at Beach, we were told that middle schools from four different schools would combine into one middle school, Oakley Green. Everyone said it would be better there, a fresh start, less crowded, and some of us actually believed them. But from the moment we arrived at Oakley Green, we were surrounded by chaos. Our schedules were so mixed up that few students could claim the schedules they got the first week were the same they got the second. You'd think that things would only get better after that, that it was just the predictable amount of chaos for the first week of a brand-new school. But it didn't stop there. Our classes were still overcrowded, with my science class having more than 45 students in it, making it so that we had to borrow chairs from other classes. For the first couple of months of school, we didn't have a compact math teacher. In addition to these school-wide problems, there are also problems specific to the Spanish immersion program. The teacher we had for Spanish Language Arts, Spanish Social Studies, and English Language Arts quit, leaving us with subs for half of our classes. After a series of subs, we were given one substitute who stayed until the end of the year. She subbed for our three classes, two of them being entirely in Spanish, but our substitute didn't speak Spanish. That year, seventh grade, we missed a whole year of Spanish, putting us behind other children our age. That left us feeling isolated, angry, and disappointed. We tried to keep an open mind despite these enormous setbacks, but we couldn't help feeling abandoned without a permanent teacher. We felt like we were being punished for something we didn't even do. We hope this year we would be better. We have permanent teachers for every class, a full-time principal, and fresh promises from the district saying this year will be different, more organized. The district said they believe teachers are most influential to student learning. And then it happened again. The teacher we had been assigned to for English Language Arts was actually a social studies teacher. A decision was made to move all of the Spanish immersion students out of two classes due to overcrowding. We have been without a permanent English teacher for six weeks now. My worry is that we will go into high school unprepared. It isn't even our fault. It feels like our voices aren't being heard, though we are yelling loud enough. How would you feel if your child's needs were being compromised? Nobody likes feeling ignored, or like someone has given up on them. If the goal in creating Oakley Green was to reduce overcrowding and give middle schoolers the education they deserve, that hasn't happened. Last year, the district sent in a TOSA after months and months of having no long-term substitute, no permanent teacher, no one who even spoke Spanish. This year, it would help improve our education if we had another TOSA, since we still have no permanent teacher. There are other things the district could do, like thinking ahead about scheduling and staffing problems. But my biggest recommendation is just to look before you leap.
You can go ahead and finish. Go ahead and finish if you're not done.
I'm done.
You're done?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for speaking up.
My name is Joseph Clyde, C-L-Y-D-E. I'm a bus driver, GT bus driver, for First Student contracted to PPS. I'm requesting two new policies from the Board, one on handheld electronic devices and one on wearing of spraying, or spraying of strong scents or fragrances on the school bus. First Student drivers and PPS drivers share the same interests, the safety of your children while being transported by us. We can only deliver your precious cargo if they behave in a way that doesn't distract us from our primary functions to drive the bus consistent with our safety training protecting them and the public. Many of us have students who can carry devices with their attention on the screen while crossing streets and up and down the bus stairs. We are very concerned with the safety of the children and must help in keeping them safe. You can do that with a defined policy on carrying electronic devices around the buses. Students won't be kept safe if they are not paying attention to where they are walking, crossing streets, and climbing up and down bus stairs. Schools require students to turn off and stow their cellphones. When they get out of school, they turn on those devices. When waiting at the school bus stops, the devices are on and in their hands. They approach the buses with devices and their attention is directed at screens. We greet the students onto the bus and unlike a stationary classroom where the teacher faces the children, we turn our backs to them and focus our primary job of safely driving the bus, delivering them to their destinations. Oregon and Washington recently implemented a new handheld device law based on distracted driving, that anyone driving is impaired as much as driving under the influence while using a handheld device. I have seen the distraction of a handheld device for pedestrians and students while walking and crossing the streets. The other safety issue has to do with scents and fragrances. Strong scents are being used by some students even as young as elementary school. In the last several years, more than one driver has had to pull the bus over, transfer students to another bus, and have 911 called after a scent was sprayed on their bus, or being worn by a student and the driver had trouble breathing. If the driver has trouble breathing, what of a child who might have asthma? These incidences have been reported to central dispatch and are well documented at the time of occurrences. The school administrators say they can't interfere with the scent issue, hence we need a policy from the school board. In conclusion, I have presented two safety issues we'd like to see considered for policies that can be used to keep children we transport safe: handheld electronic devices and scents worn or sprayed on our school buses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have John Grueshow and Beth Blumklotz.
Okay, I'm John Grueshow, G-R-U-E-S-C-H-O-W, with the War Resisters League, Portland Chapter. The Oregon Department of Education is determined to raise the state's graduation rate, which is currently at 75 percent and among the lowest in the nation. At the same time, the U.S. Armed Forces are under pressure from President Trump to meet elevated recruiting goals, and the pesky requirements that all military recruits have a high school diploma or GED is a major impediment to that goal. The Oregon DOE's recent endorsement of the Oregon National Guard's credit proficiency program is aimed at solving both of these dilemmas. The credit proficiency program, also called the Oregon Plan, works like this. A senior in high school who lacks the credits to graduate can enlist in the Oregon National Guard, complete basic training and advanced individual training, or AIT, and his or her graduation requirements are then satisfied. Juniors in high school can enlist in a split training program by completing basic training in the summer and AIT following their senior year. The Oregon DOE now encourages all school districts in Oregon to grant high school credits under this program. If all that sounds pretty good to you, I encourage you to think again. The Oregon Plan is just a way to fudge the numbers in terms of Oregon's high school graduation rate, and it also makes the National Guard recruiter's job a lot easier. To accept military enlistment and training as the equivalent of high school coursework is to shortchange our most needy students and compromise the value of the high school diploma. There is nothing remotely academic about basic training, and the purpose of AIT is to prepare service members to do one specific job in the military. That job could easily be in the motor pool, or in the laundry, or in KP. The fact is, the majority of military jobs do not lead to solid post-military careers, and the majority of civilian bosses view military training as too limited and not readily transferable to the workplace. The point is that military training is no substitute for high school classroom instruction. Students who are having difficulty completing their credits toward graduation need to be supported and encouraged and given extra help, not funneled into the military. And if any of you think that the National Guard is not really the armed forces, check out the number of recent Oregon National Guard deployments to Afghanistan and other battlefields around the globe. In closing, I'm requesting that the Board and the Superintendent advise your principals, counselors, and other staff to steer clear of the Oregon Plan and to be more creative in supporting and encouraging our struggling high school students. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Beth Blumklotz. My last name is spelled B-L-U-M-K-L-O-T-Z. I am a school bus driver. I'm beginning, or in the beginning of my sixth year with Portland Public Schools. We need your help, and we're in these jobs of driving a school bus for our students who have special needs because we care about these students and their families. And we're seeing that our students are being neglected. We recognize the district is going through some major changes. However, in our opinion, PPS is not engaging a meaningful conversation to move our complaints as drivers into action. And yes, we are currently in contract negotiations. No bargaining is not going well with PPS. We are continuing to meet and show up in good faith. However, PPS is continuing to show up unprepared. We're sharing all kinds of different stories and examples of why we feel that our needs should be heard and where we need help, and we get pleasant and professional nods. Our senior drivers, who've been here 20, 25 years, their earnings the same or similar to nutrition service drivers. And please hear me, it takes 25 years for our drivers to earn what a nutrition service driver earns within a year. Portland has become one of the most expensive cities in the United States. Traffic is getting worse. Portland is becoming more and more expensive, and traffic is continuing to become worse. However, we have a wage freeze, that's what we've been told, and we make less than your average garbage hauler, and the students we transport are more valuable, so why are we making such a low wage? We would like to open up a conversation with you, where you can actually hear our concerns directly. We would like to work with you. We are highly competent drivers who enjoy working with our children and our community. We're service-focused and with hard-working attitudes. We perform based on what our administration, what our supervisors are expecting, and what our students and families need. We go above and beyond, day in and day out. You see that in the winter when we had the snow and ice. Not one driver got off the bus. Not one driver told the parents, "Come get your child." We stayed with our students until the end. We had drivers who didn't get home until nine or 10 o'clock at night and still showed up at the next working day. So with the current traffic conditions, people are, there's more cars on the road. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mm-hmm.
You could have finished that last sentence if you'd like.
Oh, okay. Just saying that with all the cars on the road and the amount of accidents, the pedestrians, you've already heard other speakers share about that. It is a challenge in navigating, and there is value in that, and we believe that our value deserves to be increased in monetary. And we have a just handout for you. If you could just...
Thank you.
Next, we have Maria McClay and Ken Thrasher.
I'll go ahead and start. Chair Bren Madred, School Board members, Superintendent Guerrero. My name is Ken Thrasher, T-H-R-A-S-H-E-R. And I'm a 1967 graduate of Franklin High School and a very proud Quaker. For over 100 years, and 54 years since I entered as a freshman at Franklin and first attended there, the Quaker name has been in place. Benjamin Franklin, while not a Quaker, had certain beliefs, including integrity, equality, simplicity, stewardship of the earth, and peace, which are also values shared by the Quaker community. They are as relevant today, I believe, as they were when the school was opened. And not in a religious manner, but in a secular manner. Having just celebrated my 50th class reunion at Franklin and seeing the opening of the beautifully remodeled school, which I want to thank you all of the district for making happen, we have today, for the Franklin Quakers, a really great place to learn. Until only about 18 months ago was the Quaker name an issue, but recently, in that period, we've started to hear people challenge the name Quaker at Franklin High School. And I appreciate the district re-looking at your overall policies and naming policies around nicknames, logos, et cetera. But overall, I think history, tradition, and discussions with the alumni should be really necessary when you review changes like this, which I don't think happened in the first round of review. And I can understand ethnic demeaning names and characterizations and other possible reasons for nickname and mascot logo changes, but I don't see any relevance in changing the Quaker name. In fact, Seattle's Franklin High School, as you may know, went through this same process a few years ago and changed their name to the Earthquakes from the Quakers. Quite ironic that we're thinking about the big one and you would change your name to Earthquakes, I think. But soon after that change, they changed their name back to Quakers. And I think part of that was input from alumni who were very concerned about the change, which also probably impacted their donations and their time spent at the school, based on alumni who are very active in the Franklin community, not only in Seattle, but here in Portland. We have a great organization. So the question is, why do you even think about changing a name like that? I think it's time for us to really focus on what's important. We need to increase attendance and graduation rates.
Can you wrap up your comments?
Close the achievement gap and work on helping our students with their cognitive and non-cognitive skill development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Maria McClay, M-C-C-L-A-Y. I work as a learning center teacher at Scott K8 in northeast Portland. Just recently, two full-time SPED positions were reassigned from four schools that serve a majority of historically underserved students. Four historically underserved schools each lost a half-time special educator because it was decided that the missing budget for central office staff could be found by removing the historically underserved special education designation. Just to be clear, the additional point for special education staff for schools that serve a majority of historically underserved students was a way of band-aiding some major inequities. Students at these schools who receive special education services need more services than most of their counterparts at schools with small populations of underserved students. A student who is learning English as a second language and comes from a low-income family is more likely to need more learning goals and more minutes per goal than a monolingual, English-speaking student from a middle-class family with the same diagnosis. Many students in these schools also need wraparound services. More goals, more minutes per goal, and more services equal more time per student on the part of staff. The historically underserved designation was a tiny Band-Aid that was in place while we wait for the right time to wait assignment of special education staff to the number of service minutes on the IEP instead of the number of students. We are not seeing most students for the number of minutes outlined in their IEPs. It is difficult to coordinate with teachers to ensure accommodations are happening in classrooms when teachers are overworked already, especially in a dual-immersion school where teachers are translating many of their own materials. Let me state that equity is about ensuring that students have what they need to succeed. Equity is a big topic at PPS, but this decision furthers inequity. We may be in a budget crisis, but we are always in a budget crisis. And our students have been waiting for us to wait special education FTE by service minutes instead of by number of students. This decision was handed down to schools with one week to make the transition happen and zero communication to parents. As far as I know, there has still been zero official communication to parents. There should be communication from the district, and it should explain clearly the reasoning for the lessening of their children's federally mandated IEP services. I demand that this issue be put on the Board's agenda for the next Board meeting and FO meeting. You need to be held publicly accountable for following the district's budget and bylaws. And you need to be held publicly accountable for supporting staff to implement federally mandated individual education plans. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lastly, we have Vanessa Rentschler and Rebecca Jacobson.
Okay, what she just said, all of that. I'm Vanessa Rentschler, R-E-N-T-S-C-H-L-E-R. I was here back in October. I testified regarding my son, who's a PPS student in special ed. He's autistic and has done remarkably well with the outside ABA support that has now been taken away because it was so effective. That's, it was just abruptly taken away. That sarcasm. So I won't go into the details again, but I do have this awesome letter for you and you all, written by Paul Trudall and several of us, dozens in fact, dozens of signatures from not just families, but lots of stakeholders, ABA providers, advocacy organization representatives. The reason why I'm sitting here is because when I wrapped up, I believe there was a comment when I was walking back to my seat that this was more of a issue for SPED admins versus you all. And it occurred to me that maybe you don't realize what it's like to navigate a SPED system in your school, in your district. We of course have gone to the higher-ups, the highest up in SPED. And honestly, the conversation becomes so circular, it could easily be a who's-on-first bit. You know, if we continue to allow outside providers in, then we are admitting we are not providing FAP. Okay, so my son is currently not receiving FAP at all. It's like glorified babysitting this year because of this policy change. So PPS won't provide FAP because someone might accuse the district of not providing FAP. So who's on first? I don't know. In all seriousness, please read this letter, please. Please consider suspending this policy change. Please work with us, families. We want to work with you all. We don't want this to be a fight. Please consider revising this policy for next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask Roseanne and Superintendent Guerrero to please follow up on this issue, explaining to the explaining to the board the impetus for this policy change, because we have heard a lot of compelling testimony, not just from parents, but from other advocacy organizations and other advocates for students with autism about how effective it was. So we don't have much background on what spurred this change.
Well, we need to do the same about the previous one. Go ahead.
My name is Rebecca Jacobson, J-A-C-O-B-S-E-N. And I'm here because my family had a bad experience when we first moved to PPS five years ago. I'm pleased to tell you that this story has a happy ending, but also pain and lost opportunities along the way. My son Xander is on the autism spectrum. When we first arrived in Portland, Xander was in the end of seventh grade. He already had an IEP, but it took two weeks for someone to figure out where he should be placed. During those two weeks, he could have been learning, adjusting to his new environment, and getting to know his teachers, but instead, he sat at home playing video games. Quick action is important. Lost time for a kid on the spectrum can never be regained. And since they start with deficits, they mustn't lose any precious time. The timing was, the timing was bad and placement was bad. Without ever meeting Xander, someone placed him in a B-room. A B-room is inappropriate for a student with autism. There was no way for his school, for his new school, there was, there was no one at his new school who knew how to help him. They did what they were trained to do, modify behavior with carrots and sticks. This did not work and was in fact disastrous. My son was suspended many times during eighth grade. Once for being desperate to enter a room he felt safe in and being unable to explain to an uninformed teacher in the hallway why he was pounding on the door. After many suspensions for reasons all relating to his autism, the IEP team called a meeting. A decision had clearly already been made. The team took a vote. Note that I was way outnumbered. And for the final four weeks of the school year, they decided to put him in Pioneer School. It turned out that Pioneer was actually a really good and better situation for Xander, but it was another inappropriate placement. Now here's the happy ending. Xander is a senior at Cleveland High School, and he's doing really well. Once he moved to high school, everything got better. We love his teachers, and he has great special ed teachers who really understand autism and are able to help him. I cannot give enough thanks and praise to Judy Champion, Keith Early, and Dominic Lefave. They couldn't, why couldn't the school district do this for him when he was in middle school? It's incredibly important to get the placement right immediately when a student enters the district. Xander's eighth grade year was a lost year. Education he should have gotten, but didn't. For the sake of other students, please, please, make sure you place your students appropriately right away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for sharing your stories and your concerns. Next, I'd like to ask Laird Kudzak, Director of Labor Relations, to present two contracts tonight. Are you going to have somebody joining you?
Yes, do SEIU first.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'll let them self-introduce.
James Dean, co-chair of 503 SEIU.
I'm Mike Ray, 503 organizer, SEIU.
So today, you're going to vote on the, their two-year contract. SEIU has got about 545 employees working in custodial and nutritional services. Their contract expired in July 1st of this year. We met in bargaining, well, I didn't, we met in bargaining eight times and came off with an agreement, which is a two-year agreement, which corresponds with the state's biennium budgeting process, so that we will be able to see what the funding is for the following years when we bargain again. We have a raise of 3%, which is retroactive to July of this year, and 2% raise next year. There will not be any step increases during the course of the contract that allowed the raises to go to all members of the unit, not just those who had step, step increases in front of them. There's no change in the benefits contribution cap for this bargaining unit. They're, they're part of the OEB group, and so we did not change their, their cap. And there were some minor changes to language, which I'm not going to really go through, which were agreed from both sides that we needed some improvements to, to the language. Anything you want to add?
Either of you like to say anything?
Just a couple notes. One, wanted to thank, which neglected to do, thank Board Member Anthony and Board Member Bailey for coming to our meeting, getting to know some of the unit for Local 140. That was during negotiations. We wanted to make sure that we put some faces to names and also get some of our concerns out there for y'all to hear. The bargain in general, I think, went pretty well. I do want to highlight that there, that this is a step in the right direction. We've seen some, some small pay increases that have been a long time coming, but we did have to forego step increases in the custodial department, which is always a sting. Getting positions added this year, I think, was, was huge, and working towards getting the department, custodial department, where it needs to be. We're still chronically understaffed. I think you guys hear that quite a bit. Nutrition Services, the same way, for those of you that don't know, Local 140 also encompasses nutrition services. There's just a lot of work to do and not a lot of staff. There's a lot of difficulty in recruitment right now. We're hearing from management of both departments. The job fair that's, that's happening right now is not attracting a lot of candidates. So those are concerns going forward. Again, steps in the right direction, but I just think that wages haven't been keeping pace, that's for sure. Wages have not been keeping pace, and it's going to continue to be a problem.
James, do you want to say anything?
Well, I'm just glad to be under contract for another two years.
We're glad too. Anything else?
Nope. Any questions?
Any questions from the board members? Director Anthony?
Yes, thank you.
Where are we with getting new janitorial staff in our new buildings? Those, staffing those, I know, has been a real problem.
It's a work in progress. I think they're still trying to figure that out. I mean, we, we have a lot of absences and, and we're low staff, so it's a struggle, but trying to work on it.
Okay. Where are we on a new policy on snow days? I know that was a real concern for you.
I have seen no new policy on snow days. We haven't figured that one out yet.
Perhaps, Director Anthony, we could also have the HR team or the Labor Relations team provide you with some follow-up information that's helpful.
I may be jumping topics here, but the next FAO meeting is going to be, is going to have an agenda item on winter preparations, so.
Other questions?
Superintendent Guerrero?
Other questions for staff on this contract?
Glad to see it's settled in the retroactive paychecks before the holidays.
Great.
I just want to thank you for your work that you, the custodians and kitchen staff, do for us every day.
You're welcome.
And I know there were a number of, not specifically contract issues, but things that you were encountering on the job, and want to follow up with that to see how those are being handled.
Okay, we appreciate that one for sure.
Great. Thank you to both, both sides for coming to an agreement. It's nice to head into the year. The board is now going to vote on, we're changing orders, everybody, so we're starting with Resolution 5532. All in favor? Sorry, it was wrong on the script. We don't want to vote for the wrong thing. I want to make sure that we get this ratified. The board will now vote on Resolution 5333. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Student rep Tran? Resolution 5333 is approved by a seven-to-zero vote with Representative Tran voting yes. Congratulations, and thank you to both, both of you, both sides. So next, we're, we'd like, we're going to consider the DCU contract. It's a nice night to have two contracts before us. Are you Pat Christensen?
Yes, I am, Pat Christensen, President of the DCU.
The District Council of Unions is, has 100 members who will work in the trades. Their contract is set to expire this, this coming December, 31st, 2017. Pat approached us and with the idea of having a rollover with no contract language changes. We met once, had a good conversation, and came to our rollover agreement, which will provide for a 3% increase next July. And it maintains the current medical benefits for all of his members and takes and allows the district to pay the rate which the trust is charging for those benefits and not incur additional costs.
Must have been quite a meeting.
It was three hours of good conversation.
Absolutely. We held him through lunch. So I'm Pat Christensen. I represent the plumbers and steam fitters for UE Local 290, and they happen to work through the DCU. I'm also the President of the DCU. I'd like to take a minute to introduce some of the other council members that have come in today. If you'd be so kind, this is Gene Blackburn. He represents the Teamsters that work in your warehouse. He's the Vice President of the Council. Thank you, Gene. Larry Warren, he's the machinist rep. He represents the machinists that work in your maintenance department. He's also our Secretary Treasurer. We have Donna Hammond up here. She is the business agent for the electricians. Stand-up Ben. We have Ben Guzman. He's the representative for Lyuna, the laborers that work in your labor department. Thank you all for showing up tonight. So I wanted to thank you all, and not just the school board, but your HR department and your upper administration for seeing the value in not opening up a longstanding agreement to bargain for a year-plus, which seems to be the model. We saw that there was some real win-win possible. The district got some language that preserves our members' benefits and, and gives them the opportunity to not pay excess to the Health and Welfare Fund. So we have a maintenance of benefits language, which is going to be good for everyone going forward. And quite frankly, the 3% pay increase and the stability of having a contract in place is going to bring the district close to end-market, still behind-market according to our studies, considerably actually, but it's going to help you with your recruitment. And I want to applaud that because it's been a dozen years since the district has actually tried to onboard maintenance workers to take care of your buildings. But you're currently hiring throughout the trades, maybe onesies, twosies, but it's growth, and it's going to put you in a better position to take care of not only your new buildings, but the old ones that need to stay functioning until you get them taken care of. So thank you for recognizing the win-win in a one-year rollover.
Any questions from board members? Thank you to your members for taking care of our buildings. With that, the board will now consider Resolution 5532, the extension for the District Council of Unions 2015-17 contract. Do I have a motion? Director Sparza Brown moves.
Second.
And Director Bailey seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5532. Any further board discussion?
I'm a big fan of win-win. Thank you.
All right. The board will now vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, indicate by saying no. Student Representative Tran?
Yes.
Resolution 5532 is approved by a seven-to-zero vote with Student Representative Tran voting yes.
Thanks, Pat.
Congratulations. Thank you. So our next item is middle school implementation. One of the most important priorities of the new board is the success, the hope for a successful opening of two new middle schools so that more than 1,000 students in Northeast Portland have an opportunity for an equitable middle school experience with a robust curriculum and electives. At a previous board meeting, we committed to opening the two middle schools and designated feeder patterns and made a number of other decisions. At the time, we deferred on some boundary decisions. Tonight, we will receive three updates and also consider some additional changes to that resolution. We'll begin with an update on the Harriet Tubman health and safety issues. In a moment, I'm going to invite Jerry Vincent, the Chief Operating Officer, to provide an update. Prior to Mr. Vincent's comments, I'd like to provide some context for the board's discussion about health and safety issues related to Tubman. So over the last several months, we've had several community meetings in which various community members raised different issues about the work that we were undertaking and some of the decisions we were making, and some of those questions related to the health and safety of Harriet Tubman. And so, given that, at the board meeting on October 16th, the board shared language that we planned on, that we planned on voting on for the October 24th meeting, that we were going to ask for a comprehensive environmental impact study, just wanting to make sure that if we were going to have students in that building, that we were, we had assessed any health and safety issues and had an opportunity to remediate them. At that time, we were told that there weren't any concerns about interior air quality issues. Then October 24th, when we got ready, right before we got ready to vote, there were some really significant concerns that were raised by staff about the environmental issues. And so it was recommended that we develop concurrently, concurrent to the environmental assessment, that we also had a secondary plan, just in case we weren't able to remediate the issues. The board passed that resolution, which contained both of those items, the environmental assessment and the concurrent planning for an alternative location. Following that meeting, the board members requested to have the information of the Following that meeting, the board members requested to have the information of the testing that had been done to date supplied to the board and also publicly posted. And I want to thank superintendent and the facility staff for providing that. On November 7th, there was a finance audit and operations committee meeting where that information was presented. And I think we have a much clearer picture. It's not completely, it's not completely clear, but we have, we have a lot more information than we had at that first board meeting when we were told there weren't any concerns and then sort of the, we're very concerned. And I think we have a much better sense of at least the snapshot of where we are and where we're heading. And so, with that context, I'm going to actually turn, let Director Moore, who's the Chair of that committee, sort of facilitate the next part of the meeting, I think. And Jerry Vincent, if you'd like to come down and present?
So, Jerry and his team, including Dr. John Burnham from OHSU, gave a presentation on kind of the current state of knowledge based on, I think, a pretty thorough vetting of old emails and files and archived info and presented it to the Finance Audit and Operations Committee last week and walked us through what we know, what we don't know, how we're going to find out answers to what we don't know. And I think the bottom line was what Director Brem Edwards said, which is that based on the preliminary information we have, we're feeling much more confident than we were a couple of weeks ago that Tubman is going to be an appropriate environment for students. So. So, if you could.
Thank you and good evening. So, yes, and what you're both, you know, alluding to is there's been a lot of change in staff. There's a lot of things that we didn't know, went through back over myself, over 3,000, 3,600 emails, found some things. A lot of them are repetitive, but it's the basic three issues regarding outdoor quality, indoor quality, and is there anything going on with the hillside that PPS owns? And so, what we've done since that time and with the direction is we've, we have a meeting set up with EPA and the EQ this Friday. We will find out what role they want to play. It's to put an action plan together by December 1st. We'll find out what role each one of them plays or doesn't play and then what part we need to play. So, if we need consultants above and beyond what we know to do our work right now from the air testing or do the scoping of it, we will get those consultants. One of the things we've been working on yesterday and today, and it just came to fruition this afternoon, is we've moved forward with, with findings and exemption for us to bring on, for the board approval, coming through the FAO committee, to bring on architects, engineers, contractors in order to get this done by August at these schools. And through the normal process right now, if we follow the normal process, being, being a school district in public sector, to be another 90 days, maybe 120, and as, as time that we need to get in, finish analysis, find out what we know, what we don't know, as Director Brem Edwards said, and to get a game plan formulated, move through. So, we pushed that through hard with purchasing contracts. We had many meetings yesterday, today. They got it to our lawyers. It came back. It's approved. It is on the website and is advertised out in the Tribune right now. So, there still is a 14-day period for findings. That needs to be a public posting, but we're not waiting. We met three hours yesterday with our Planning Principles for Tubman, Roseway Heights, that educational specifications planning. Tomorrow, I'm out there with our project managers in Tubman, climbing, looking through everywhere. And we'll have the meeting on Friday. We'll get things put together by December 1st. And I've dedicated two project managers from facilities strictly for this now because of the time crunch. And we're, we're ready to go. We're ready to do this.
So, that's one project manager for each of the schools or two for Tubman?
It's two for everything. I might need a third. It's whatever it takes. I mean, at this point, I mean, truly, I mean, we're all in on this.
We'll trust that Superintendent Guerrero, you'll let us know if whatever resources are needed to.
Well, I think that's something we're going to be giving further conversation. I think what you're hearing tonight here, however, is we did the forensics and looked into everything that we possibly know. There aren't any indications that the building can't be habitated by our students or the adults who work there. But of course, we're going to go a deeper level and bring in the EQ and EPA and make sure it meets standard for what a school should, should meet. And aside from that, we know that the facility needs some, some pretty aggressive work, namely, the roof. And as we reviewed this morning in a very long leadership team meeting, you know, we got a new nickname for Jerry Vincent, you know? Nothing's insurmountable here is what he's, he's pledging to us.
I'm going to do my best.
Can I just say a couple of words? I want to thank the staff for pulling out all the stops on this. This has been a very tight timeline. I mean, it was a tight timeline to begin with. And the last couple of weeks, I know everybody's been working, I'm guessing, 20-hour days. So, I wanted to thank everybody. I'm impressed by the amount of information you were able to pull together. And I know I'm feeling a lot better. But I also want, I think it's important to, to just say out loud that every conversation I've had with everybody in the district, we are full-on committed to opening these two middle schools. I mean, we're going to do whatever it takes, whatever we can. Part of that is a pledge to the students and families that we're not going to put students in a situation that's going to be hazardous in any way. And if we find down the road that conditions are not going to be fixable in Tubman, we have pledged to each other that we are going to say it out loud and we are going to pull the plug. If we don't pull the plug, that means we're good to go. So, I just want to make sure that everybody knows we're not just, you know, going full steam ahead because we've got a political issue on our hands. It's not about politics. This is about providing an education for kids who've been denied a real middle school education for way too long. And this board is going to stop it. So, we're good to go. And I'm, I'm thrilled with the commitment that I've seen and Superintendent Guerrero and Jerry Vincent and everybody in facilities. Thank you. This has been, this has been great. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So, just want to clarify, we have currently all the materials that you all produced that are relevant are on the website, correct? So, it's.
Well, you know, so again, you take a snapshot of 3,600 emails. A lot of it's repetitive. They all come back to the three big things. There's the outdoor and quality, the indoor quality, what's happening with the hill. There's a fourth one, I haven't found it.
Great. And I would just sort of repeat what Director Moore said. Just thank you to you, Mr. Vincent, and all the facility staff. We hope that as we move forward with the testing and the other aspects of it, that we'll also be transparent and provide that information to the community. I think that, that builds trust and confidence in the work. Just as a note to the broader community, we received yesterday an outline of a proposed budget and some funding for some projects from district staff and some identified ways to resource those improvements that might be needed. And so, I think we're going to send that to the Finance Audit and Operations Committee. And I expect that our next board meeting, which is going to be held at Jefferson High School, that we will be considering that at that board meeting. And appreciate that you've, are accelerating the contracting process so that we can shoot for that August conclusion. Any other comments from board members on this particular topic?
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So, just to put a fine point on it, when we consider the resolution in, in a little bit, the resolution, we've changed the resolution relating to Harriet Tubman that we had in the resolution that everybody has before them, the Resolution Number 5534. Section, let's see, K. Let's see, it's 4K. On Tubman, we have removed the language that requires the superintendent and staff to do the concurrent planning. We've also removed language that talks about an alternative site and also changed some of the language to really, I think, indicate to the community that the preliminary information that we've received from staff and their assessment is that the issues that might be of concern can be remediated, but we're for sure going to check. Director Bailey, do you have something you want to say? So, that, that will be a fairly significant change to the resolution. So, next, just as we get ready to consider this Resolution 5534, as various board members have said at different times, opening the two middle schools next year is a high priority. We realize that, that this resolution and the work we're doing is not solving all of the problems that exist and all the challenges. We've tried to build in some, providing pathways to get to solving some of the challenges that we have with some of the elementary schools that need sort of more robust enrollments. And we'll be continuing to work on that. And there's some language also in the resolution that Director Bailey shortly will, will talk about. But I did want to specifically, just briefly raise Rigler and Scott. And I wanted to ask Oscar Gilson and Judy Brennan to just provide a brief update on that.
So, just a quick update. We have gone to the Scott community, staff and to the Rigler Scott to ask them about what they think about moving into this direction. And we're going to the communities on the 29th and 30th of this month to ask the parents what they think about. And right now, we're asking them three questions. What questions do they have? What struggles do they see that we need to be looking into? And what opportunities do they see? And so, the team with Michael Bacon, the Director of Dual Immersion, and Alma Velazquez were answering all the questions and making sure that we answer all the questions that they have before we come to you with the proposal in December.
So, let me provide a little bit of context. So, as you may know, the Rigler Spanish Immersion Program has been growing for some time. And that growth is natural, meaning these are, it's a neighborhood-only program. These are neighborhood students who are opting into it. And because of the demographics of that neighborhood, there are enough Spanish speakers along with English and speakers of other languages to form the program that it can continue to grow and meet those goals of dual language. So, having enough native Spanish speakers is a really important part of it. And the Rigler community is one where that it's a, it's a natural fit. And so, that program has been growing substantially. What that means as a result is that the program that's available for the kids who don't opt into the program or who move into the school in later years, don't have the native language ability and can't enter the program, has become smaller and smaller. This year, in grades K through two, across those three grades, there are only 29 students in what we call the English-only program. And we know that it's an important goal for dual language. It's an important goal for the district to make sure that all kids have access to a robust program and that's not meeting the needs of those kids. So, we've been looking for some time, the dual language program brought updates to the Teaching and Learning Committee on this last year as well as this fall already, explaining that it's a priority not to continue expanding the program as much as to make sure that there's an adequate, appropriate and great home for the English-only part of the program. So, I've been part of a team that's been looking for a while at different options. We looked at all the nearby schools. We have some information that we can share with you on why we thought others weren't a good fit, but that Scott, we believe, is the best fit. So, the proposal that will be coming to you in December will be to merge the Rigler English-only program with the Scott English-only program. And by doing that, we believe that will ensure that all of the kids who are at Scott, who aren't in Spanish immersion, because that school too has Spanish immersion, but the kids who aren't in Spanish immersion will have a great program that's large enough that allows kids to move around and make new friends between grade levels. And so, as I said, there'll be a lot more information on why Scott and not other choices, a lot more information about how we would implement and what the effects are. But we really want to continue working with the community, finishing up that work before we come to you with that full proposal. We believe that we'll be back to you in December. Michael Bacon, who couldn't be here tonight, he's at a conference, will probably be leading that with Oscar. So, I'm a poor replacement for him tonight. But the one piece that we did think was really important, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here at this moment, is that when we crunch the numbers, we think that if we do all the boundary changes that we had proposed for Scott and we bring in the Rigler English-only students, there may not be enough room. And in a couple of years, Scott School, which has seen overcrowding in the last years, could be right back in that overcrowded state. So, as a result, we recommend that at this moment, you hold off on particularly on the boundary change that was proposed between Alameda and Scott. The resolution that's before you doesn't include that boundary change and that's well-aligned with, with our thinking and our work so far. I apologize that you haven't seen the full Rigler analysis, but these are kind of parallel tracks and they're close to being lined up. So, if you're wondering what the immediate impact of the middle school recommendation would be on this change, the one thing we would say is please help us make sure that there's enough space for English-only students at Rigler. If we get there and we still find there's more room, I'm sorry, at Scott, we can go back and look at other changes in the future. But that's really the alignment between the two. If you have any specific questions about that proposal, you want to make sure we're going to bring back, please let us know. We'll get them to Michael and then that'll be coming back in December.
I think one thing I would ask is that, well, in advance of whatever time you're going to bring it back, that it's provided to board members so we can ask questions and also so that, I'm glad to hear that you're going to have some community meetings. Not everybody can always attend those meetings so that we provide the information in multiple languages, in a variety of different formats and ways so that we reach all of the community to make sure that we really understand what the various community members think about the idea. Great. Thank you.
I just want to say I'm glad to see this moving along because it's something we've been looking at for the last years in terms of when we have a single strand of English program alongside dual immersion programs. And we just struggle to provide quality programming. So, I think we'll continue to look at that as a matter of policy across the district because we know that it just doesn't really work for kids. And so, I'm glad to see a solution in the near term for Scott and Rigler.
Yeah, that's been a topic of conversation for a couple of years. And when there were community meetings two years ago, I don't think there were any parents there from the Rigler neighborhood side. I think it was mostly immersion parents who were there. So, again, agreeing with Director Brem Edwards that outreach to parents is really paramount.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks. One other issue that is outstanding, well, actually, I'm going to first ask before we start to other outstanding issues. I think we're going to officially move into the section where we're going to con-
I think we're going to officially move into the section where we're going to consider resolution number 5534, which modifies resolution 5528 feeder pattern and attendance area changes for Harriet Tubman and Roseway Heights Middle Schools. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
It'll just be a minute. We won't miss that. Do I have a second? It's been moved by Director Constem and seconded by Director Sparza Brown. Now, Ms. Hewson, is there any public comment?
Yes, we have six. Our first two speakers are Phoebe Perez and Anjali Weerasinghe.
That's W-E-E-R-A-S-I-N-G-H-E. I'm in 7th grade at Beverly Cleary School, and I live on Northeast 57th Avenue. Middle school is pretty tough, and from what I've heard, high school is too. There's a lot of stress and pressure with homework and extracurricular activities and with all your friends, and your classmates are always there for you to support you. And taking apart a cohort like this would disrupt the lives of the children that are taken out, and that's the situation right now for the middle schoolers at Beverly Cleary that will now be sent to Madison that live in the Northeast 47th to 57th neighborhood. I'm asking for you to make an amendment to the current resolution so that these middle schoolers will be grandfathered to Grant High School. This would let peer groups stay together and prevent families from having a possibly longer commute because of Madison's renovation. Being able to stay with our friends and continue on to high school together instead of being introduced to a completely different school and community would mean everything to us. Since we were younger, we've always had a grand future promised, and being taken apart from this group would not, would, excuse me, being taken apart from this group would be really hard for us, and we'd like to go on to high school with the rest of us. Thank you for your consideration, and we hope you keep this in mind as you vote tonight. So I feel that often people forget that this is about the children, and it's our future, and we'd like to have a say in it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Phoebe Perez is my daughter. I'm Sean Dickey. She thought she had the spoons to be here, but unfortunately, her father had to take her out, so I'll keep it brief. But this is Phoebe's fifth school. She's at Access Academy. And this resolution assigns Rose City Park to become a K-5 school and assigns no actual specific building or school to Access Academy. It only states that there will be some sort of bridge, and it'll be for 350 kids. I've provided an email that includes a proposal Access Parents spent a lot of time on that allows Rose City Park to continue to be there for Access. And if that entire building is provided, then they can serve everybody that's on the waiting list. It didn't disappear. Those kids are still out there. They still need the school. I'm in there every single day, and there is just absolutely no way these kids are going to be able to function the way they should if they don't think they have a home. They ask, they know, they lose sleep over it. My daughter had periods where she's not slept for five days. This is not how these kids should be treated. Access has never had a permanent home since 2003, when it was established. And one thing I love about the Access Parent Community is they don't sit on their laurels and say, "My kid got into Access, that's good enough." No, they want enough spaces for all the kids that need Access. They're constantly talking about what kind of impact it's going to have on historically underserved populations to put us in this building or that building. But you know what? That's not going to give us a home. The cold fact is, if you don't identify a building and you vote for the resolution the way it is, our chances of getting someplace that's even big enough to hold the kids that are there now, much less accommodate the ones whose parents are probably forced to homeschool them, doesn't do what it needs to do. So I'm asking you not to vote on this boundary change. And I can tell you that I and any other Access parent who has the ability to spend time will work with you if this proposal isn't good enough because it's been a year and a half since we gave it to you. Please, I appreciate your dedication to keeping us together, but it's only going to actually work if we identify a building, and it shouldn't be a religious institution. As a lover of the First Amendment, it was one of my favorite topics in law school, we shouldn't be doing that to any of our children. It's simply not appropriate. Please, please keep to the goal, give us a home, and please name it before you vote on the boundary changes. Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Shamika Owens and Maria Cordero.
Good evening. I'm Jason Blumklotz. I want to give a little shout-out to my baby sister. This may be the first time in history two siblings have spoken before the board on consecutive nights, or consecutive orders. My name is spelled B-L-U-M-K-L-O-T-Z. My name is Jason Blumklotz from the Tubman Common Unity. I'm an Irvington and Sunnyside parent, and I'm also a proud Harriet Tubman Middle School alum. We are at a precipice of a great moment in the city's history. After many years of dysfunction and delay, we are reopening a middle school in north-northeast Portland. The community believes that it could become a beacon of change and excellence for the entire metropolitan area. We want a school run by a great principal, check, with a diverse and culturally responsive teaching corps that looks like our diverse feeder schools. We want a cutting-edge curriculum that engages our kids and gives them the tools they require to live out their promise. We know that we need social support systems that ensure all students and their families can succeed. We need a building that allows for a dynamic program and is safe for our staff and students. And we can achieve all of this save for one glaring problem. We have simply failed to plan for success. And failure to plan is a plan to fail. I appreciate that everyone is having a good, feeling good tonight because we've made some progress, but I have some other thoughts. If we asked to see the plan to hire the right teachers for Harriet Tubman Middle School, there would be stone silence. In fact, when we asked about this very topic at the last board meeting by student representative Moses Tran, the district's response was that we have adequate budget and we're hiring much earlier. That is not a plan for teaching excellence at Harriet Tubman Middle School. If we asked you to guarantee the safety and adequacy of the facilities, you cannot affirm that. Even tonight, you said, "We may have to close this down later because we're still doing testing, testing that's not even planned to start until December 1st and will go forth." And the seismic testing will go on probably for two more years. So how can you assure the community the site is safe? If we asked the community about the underlying suppositions behind the enrollment projections, we would get a blank stare. We haven't seen them yet, and they haven't been explained, much as Mr. Director Bailey asked last time, so it's not clear anymore. Have you, the school board, really vetted those suppositions so that we know the best of our ability that our enrollment numbers are accurate? I don't think we need any reminder after the students' testimony tonight what a disaster missing by 100 students at Oakley Green was. We should be chastened and not celebrating tonight because we have not done our work. When, just please let me finish. When asked directly by Tubman Common Unity, the district, when we asked directly, asked Tubman Common Unity, for the district to show willingness or understanding of how to partner with us to bring all the resources and insight necessary to open our dream school, we were not engaged yet. One that lives, excuse me. So, we ask a commitment that lives up to the achievements of the namesake of our school, a woman of incredible courage and vision, and we demand a seated table to answer all of these questions and these decision-making points.
You need to wrap up your testimony, please.
Yeah, for these important tasks. We know that greatness is within our grasp, but we are failing still. We call on you to come together and partner with us directly on this matter. And lastly, this is not a comment of unity, but understand that in our side of our community, while we are split on this issue, there are those of us who believe you should delay, not because we want to, but because...
You really need to finish your comments. It's not fair to other people to not have the same amount of time.
Excuse me, I apologize. But that, in good conscience, the plan has to be clear. So thank you for your time, and we look forward to partnering with you.
Thank you.
My name's Maria Cordero, M-A-R-I-A and then C-O-R-D-E-R-O. I just wanted to remind us how we started this whole meeting in the first place, was this young student that came from Oakley Green that shared her testimony of what it's like for her. And to me, what I heard was, everything to come for all the middle schools that you decide to open in the state that they're in. So three minutes to share leadership reasonings and solution is not a formula for success. In fact, the whole reason I'm speaking tonight is because PPS and the board, which is everyone here sitting in front of me, have repeatedly continued political stunts, if you want to talk about politics, like these that build in structure to make sure that we are not following any formula for success. There's no doubt in this community that Harriet Tubman Middle School should open. It should open. It should be the school that benefits our children, teachers, parents, community members with culturally relevant and empowering education, adequate resources, and staffing, all that comes from the paperwork that the board has on the PPS website. I'm asking for nothing that hasn't been asked for year after year after year. In fact, why can't Harriet Tubman be the first PPS school to openly and proudly commit to centering Blackness in all forms? Every time the PPS board and staff put a toe towards equity, the white, privileged voices scream back with discomfort and inconvenience. And we're right back here where we started in the first place. Our most privileged schools are not being asked to make sacrifices. And you are actively considering giving a school with an unreliable foundation that says two years to figure out what's happening, okay? With an unreliable foundation, a falling-down building, be it the roof or whatever else has been patched up and has been housing students all this time, to the Black community and calling it equity. If any community was due a new building, a new school, it would be Portland's Black community. And why can't we name that new school, Harriet Tubman, in honor of our Black Portland history? A plan for success includes answers to the questions parents have been raising time and time again. How are you going to engage teachers of color and incentivize staff to commit to this project so that our students see themselves represented? And this opportunity needs to be central to contract negotiations that are taking place right now, which no one's been talking about. And you have another opportunity tomorrow and the 16th, because it says so on the website, when people are having these conversations. So it needs to be brought up then. And you can't put off hiring for Tubman to the last minute because that's not a plan for success. Currently, the way it stands, the opening of Tubman benefits the school board, it gives the superintendent a goal to accomplish by his bosses, and gives PPS district staff something to get paid to work on. And all the burden of this choice that is being made to open a school...
Can you wrap up your comments, please?
I understand.
Thank you.
But I'm going to finish. Open in less than nine months during rain, winter, and then over the summer when the staff is off. And it will be placed at the feet of our children, of children who have been burdened every day with our current middle years program and their lack of funding for way too long. Teachers will be burdened, burdened to open a new school with the demand that it thrives when they don't even have adequate resources themselves. We will demand that it does thrive as parents and community members and teachers. Just the answer to these two simple questions, who benefits and who is burdened, tells us that this is not a formula for success. Where is Plan B? Where is Plan C when we find out that Plan A isn't at all a plan? And who will carry out the budget now that this position is also vacant? And the moment, this moment, is the critical choice point. We demand access to this decision that has been made in the name of racial equity. Where are the elected, oh, you are the elected problem solvers, and you work for us. The superintendent works for us. We're the bosses.
Can you wrap up?
We're all of us, not just the rich and the privileged.
Please wrap up your comments up.
I understand. I understand. This happens all the time. We could talk about time, or you could just listen, because I'm not going to stop until I'm done. Don't spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on a Band-Aid when our middle school, their students, staff, and teachers needed that money yesterday. Give us specifics on detail, be transparent, and have us at the table during all the formations of this process. Anything less reinforces white supremacy culture in our schools that we live with every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last two speakers, Nick Mathern and Claire Dennerlin.
Thank you. My name is Nick Mathern, M-A-T-H-E-R-N. And before I make my statement, I'll say that, given the amendments to the resolution, I don't know if everything I have to say tonight is still necessary, but in the interest of sprinting through the finish line, I want to make sure I say it now so I don't have to come back and say it next time. Thank you for your time, and on behalf of my children who attend Martin Luther King Junior School, I thank you for your service. I am immensely grateful to you for dedicating your time and energy to what are certainly the most thankless volunteer positions available in our weird city. And with that, I'm here to ask you to do what you signed up for. My children, their classmates, and our community needs you to make a difficult decision. Despite the best efforts of many teachers, parents, and administrators, K-8 schools have failed thousands of middle school students in north and northeast Portland. The thousands of hours poured into the DEBRAC process and the analysis by district staff has all led to the conclusion that a comprehensive middle school is needed to adequately and equitably meet the needs of our children. While multiple proposals considered during the past two years have varied on some details, the overwhelming trajectory has clearly been toward reopening Harriet Tubman Middle School to serve the community it was built to serve. Is Tubman a perfect building? No. We're all too well aware of the significant facilities problems facing many PPS buildings. I would also prefer if the building did not overlook I-5, but unless you have another building in a quiet neighborhood that you've been secretly constructing, this is the building that we have. And we cannot let another class of sixth, seventh, or eighth graders be deprived of an adequate education or equitable preparation for high school because the site is not ideal. Tubman effectively served the students of Fabian for the past two years, carrying them to their beautiful new building. And now we need Tubman to carry our students to high school, prepared and equipped for success. I understand that you are damned if you do and damned if you don't. There is no solution that makes everyone happy. The difference is that in this case, if you don't, hundreds and perhaps thousands of students are damned as well, damned to another year or more of lost opportunities for an enriching middle school experience. If, in fact, environmental concerns do prove to be an issue for Tubman, we should ameliorate them or find, in the long term, a suitable alternative site. However, in the interim, please do not allow those concerns to prevent our most under-resourced students from attending a well-resourced middle school. You can make this happen. You have the power and responsibility to ensure that Tubman is open for our students in Fall 2018. And you can also act to ensure that the schools sending students to Tubman have adequate enrollment boundaries to keep them thriving and full. These are the difficult decisions that we elected you to make, and we are counting on you to make these decisions as part of our work together to transform PPS into the district that is truly equitable and functional for the entire community.
Thank you.
My name is Claire Dennerlin Manson, D-E-N-N-E-R-L-E-I-N-M-A-N-S-O-N. And I'm here with Io Dennerlin Manson, who is a 5th grader at Martin Luther King Junior K-8 school, hopefully soon. K-8 school, hopefully soon to be a K-5. I wish that I could have rewritten my testimony in real time during tonight. I heard a lot of things that encouraged me and a lot of things that discouraged me. But what I want you to hear most is from my daughter. I want you to hear from a member of Martin Luther King Junior Elementary School who has been a community member for six years and wouldn't trade it for the world, wouldn't trade it for a, quote, "better education," for a more elite in a different place. But she needs a middle school, she and every single one of her community members. She has looked her parents in the eye and said, "I will not go elsewhere. I will not be separated from my community." That is what we are raising our children for, that is what Dr. Martin Luther King wanted, that is probably what Harriet Tubman wanted as she ushered countless people bravely in the night to freedom. We have a white child, we have the last white child in fifth grade. They leave every single year. Middle-class, privileged families, particularly white families, bail on Martin Luther King Elementary, they bail on Saban, they bail on Boise Elliott. It is important, first and foremost, not for my child, but for an underserved and historically burdened and abused community of black and brown Portland to be given a proper middle school, in a proper building that has functional systems, but more than air quality, more than a roof, and more than a sloping hillside, to be given a black-centered, proud, and robust middle school education that will lead them to high school, success, and success in our world. And I can tell you, while my daughter is second in that, and I firmly believe that, she will only be a better person than already the amazing person she has become by being surrounded in greatness, in blackness and brownness. Please bring that to Portland again, as Harriet Tubman has been in the past. Show the white community of Portland what black excellence looks like and what they're missing, and show the black and brown community of Portland that they matter finely and really, and give them a school that we all deserve. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Everybody? And that's all the public testimony we have tonight. So, now, we're going to consider the resolution. It's on the table, and I'm gonna ask Director Bailey to walk through some of the changes, especially the boundary ones and some of the additions from the version of the resolution that we had last time.
Just trying to take a deep breath here. Thanks to everybody who testified. That's, kinda says it all. So, what we're trying to do here, again, is to get two middle schools opened. We passed a resolution- Am I? Okay, passed a resolution three weeks ago that deferred some things, and so, we're trying to take another couple of steps down the road. So, what the resolution, and we'll have some amendments to it to clean up some things, because when I ran for office, I never said I was detail-oriented. There you go. Yeah, speak up, okay. Is this on? It's working, okay. I just need to be right here. Okay, what we're trying to do is confirm that our goal is to open two middle schools in the fall of 2018, confirm and establish boundaries for the feeder schools for each middle school, specify that the Vietnamese dual-language immersion program will be moved to Rose City Park, address the overcrowding at Beverly Cleary, and specify specifically how various students who are affected by boundary changes, where they will end up in the coming years. The resolution recognizes that access still needs a home, that's a work in progress, and we're gonna have a comment by that from staff, and that tag services need to be bolstered across the district, and we are asking the superintendent to address those issues. It's important to recognize that this resolution is not primarily an enrollment balancing resolution. Some boundaries have had to be changed due to the reconfiguration of Roseway Heights and the overcrowding at Beverly Cleary, but there are still substantial enrollment imbalances within these two clusters and across the east side that need to be addressed. And again, the last clause of the resolution remains that we're asking for a plan and a timeline for doing the whole east side, for addressing educational options review, and for changing the focus option lottery process to address these imbalances. Specifically, not included in this plan was what we heard from earlier about shifting neighborhood students from Regler to Scott. And there's some other things that we've called out specifically in this plan. For example, the clause is still in there for coming up with a plan to shift Verona to a K-5 and to articulate Verona to a middle school. We recognize that Vestal will be under-enrolled. That issue is not a boundary issue. There's plenty of kids within the Vestal catchment area. That needs to be addressed around our focus option lottery and around our educational option review around focus options. We recognize that Martin Luther King Junior K-5 would only have a single strand of neighborhood students, and there is a new amendment I'm proposing that we, again, come up with a plan to address that sooner rather than later, since- The original proposal had a one-year-at-a-time, starting with kindergarten, impact. To me, that's too slow. And again, really, we really need to finish the job of drawing new boundaries on the east side and balancing enrollment. With respect to Tubman, again, our initial staff assessment this time indicates that there are no insurmountable health and safety impediments to opening the school. And again, we will monitor that closely, we'll go ahead with the testing, but at this point, our planning process is to proceed ahead with Tubman. And if something happens and there are health and safety risks that we cannot remediate, then we pledge to, we will ask the superintendent to come up with an alternative planning process, and we pledge to work with the Tubman community very closely from day one on that process. But right now, we're just gonna hope that the testing doesn't find anything that we can't address. That's my summary.
Great, thanks. And I think the Superintendent Guerrero, did you want to speak briefly about your tour of all the facilities, looking for the home for access, or do you want me to speak briefly about it? I know you've been working really hard.
Yeah, I'd really like to speak to that, just because I want to acknowledge that, again, access families, and I saw students earlier, were here again tonight, and you've been very patient, thank you for that. We committed with the goal of finding a campus where Access Academy can make it its home. I just want to let you know, staff has continued to be very active in exploring those options. We have the portfolio that we have of schools. Obviously, that requires us to take a pretty deep look at where we might have facilities that are under-enrolled, or that have programs that families have elected other choices, and what are some of those options? And why you may have, why you might be experiencing a little bit of a quiet period here is, because we want to be very sensitive to those families or programs that might see themselves relocated. And we want to be very careful with that. I expect that we probably need another five to seven working days to circle back to access and share with you a more specific location that then we can begin talking about. But this is a decision that is likely to impact on several school communities and their school leaders, and we want to make sure to continue working through those conversations. But I just want to assure you that staff continues to be very proactive about that.
Thank you. And I think, just to sort of circle back about the resources needed to really carry out the intent of the many different moving parts in these resolutions, that we should be considering that at our next board meeting. And appreciate, again, our CFO and the finance team for putting together the sort of package for consideration. We wanted these right, and I think it's probably important to acknowledge that while the facilities issues have been challenging, given we have many older facilities and there's imbalances in enrollment, really, the hard work is gonna happen when the board finishes this, because setting the schools up for success, which will be a big job for the staff and the superintendent, that's, I think, gonna be the, what's gonna make all the difference next fall for students. The buildings are important, but more important, what's happening in the classroom. Any other comments or questions from board members? Director Anthony?
Yes, thank you, I have several. The first is that I would like to propose an amendment to Item K, where it enumerates the things that will be tested for in Tubman. I would like that to include heavy metals, including cadmium, zinc, copper, and iron oxide. Cadmium, leftover from uborous glass, and the other three, I understand, are given off in breakdust. It's very fine, it is potentially very destructive, and we need to know if it's there and act accordingly.
Ms. Hewson, did you get that list?
I did.
Did you, are you formally offering that amendment?
Yes, I am.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yes, second. Third.
So, it's been first and seconded. Ms. Hewson, could you just repeat it so everybody, and I think that probably should go at the end of the first sentence, maybe before, and carcinogens?
Okay. To include heavy metals, cadmium, zinc, copper, and iron oxide.
Yep. It's been first and seconded. Any discussion?
I'm guessing staff is gonna do this anyway, but to, you know, is there anything else out there that we should be worried about?
So, I think it should be noted that-
Consult with some appropriate university partners to make sure that we're covering all our bases.
I think we've indicated it's gonna be a comprehensive health and safety assessment, and that we'll leave it to the discretion, we've already listed, I think, probably what are the primary concerns, and there's ones to be added, that could be added by staff. So, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Student rep?
Yes.
The vote is seven to zero in favor, with student Representative Tran voting yes. Other discussion? Director Anthony?
No, I do have the start of a couple of questions. I simply do not understand why we are delaying on MLK. We've seen a proposal for more students that would make it, as Mr. Mathern said, thriving and full. What is it that needs to happen over the coming year that will create a situation, a question for us that's any different than what we are looking at now? And maybe that's more appropriate for staff. But for 15 years, I have been living next to the MLK community, and they've been breaking my eardrums this whole time because they are so desperately under-enrolled. For me, addressing that's a priority. Why are we waiting?
And do we have a process outlined for reevaluating?
So, what I would say, Director Anthony, is there is a committee that you're on, and I think the full board would welcome and entertain a proposal from the committee to make changes. And I think how we've approached this amendment, or the middle school opening, is our primary focus has been, first, to get the middle schools open. There's a lot of timelines that are driven by the board action, but there's no reason why the enrollment and forecasting committee can't make a recommendation to the full board, and will put it on the agenda, as I think I told staff at the very beginning of the year. Middle schools and enrollment and balancing is probably gonna be on every single board agenda for the entire year. So, while we're not considering it tonight, please bring a proposal forth, and we can consider it.
Okay. Thank you on that basis. I'm happy to defer, but I am expecting that Enrollment and Forecasting is gonna have to discuss this very soon. I have a list of such items. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, there's just a lot that was being discussed tonight. So, I had a question. So, voting on this resolution tonight would mean that Harriet Tubman is on schedule to open next year, but then seismic testing will be happening for, like, the next two years? So, I just want it to be clear, like, because it's confusing to me, because of, like, next year, when I go to college and I hear, like, Harriet Tubman slide down a hill into the freeway, like, that'll be on my conscience. So, like, I don't want to vote on a school that's, you know, like, that's not secure for the students, because, you know, I want the best safety for students.
Yeah, I think that's what we're all-
Let me, staff, clarify the hillside issue, because I think there's a fair amount of misunderstanding about what's exactly at risk here.
Or, I have heard from a number of experts in the community, if you'd like me to speak to it briefly.
Well, I'm wondering if Mr. Vincent is here?
Dr. Burnham is out.
I can make an attempt to summarize what we know. I think student delegate Tran, it'll be on my conscience, and I think a lot of ours, if there is an issue. And I think what our chief operating officer, Vincent, can elaborate on is, the site is actually midway through a two-year seismic study, a geologic study. There's nothing that the probes have indicated regarding movement, but of course, we're awaiting sort of the final results of it. Do you want to elaborate on that, Jerry?
Yes, so, you're right on. You know, from the last time we talked, there's been a budget revise, and what I've taken a look at is, why would we want someone to come back to Harriet Tubman on opening day and say, "Hey, great, they solved the outdoor air quality"? Well, it's not me, it's whoever this is.
So, Ms. Hewson, or-
So, since our last time here, there's a budget revise, and part of the budget revise is not only to add a high-end HEPA system for a brand-new HVAC system across the entire site from the outdoor particulates, which will help, the other is exactly what you're talking about. There's a two-year study. I looked at how long it would take to stabilize any part of our hillside, and why would someone want to come back to Tubman on day one and say, "Great news, the outdoor air quality is great, and the indoor air quality is great, and am I sliding into the hillside"? Who wants to come back to that? In addition, the work that we need to do would take more than the 62 days of summer. So, if we are bold, and if we are going for this, I decided to go for it, and increases, we increased it by a couple million dollars to do all the stabilization right now while we're doing the other work at Harriet Tubman, and be able to open it with the trifecta in place when we go. So, that's it, because if you go by last board, it did read that way, and then the budget read that way. And since then, I- read that way. And since then, I was driving home and thinking the same thing you were. I don't want to solve two out of three, you know, for opening day. I don't want to do that.
Thank you.
So what you're saying is, what's going to come to us next week, our next board meeting, is a budget that has enhanced resources for that issue?
Correct. Thank you for bringing that up.
So I would like to offer a modest amendment for our discussion. So this proposal still includes a slice of the Alameda boundaries, that is, the sort of southeast corner, that to make the move there is actually, and it defies several of our policies and values now. And I originally didn't think that, I originally didn't have any problem with this proposal, and I certainly don't think any school boundaries are sacrosanct, but looking more closely at it, one of the important policies and values that it is in violation of is our safe routes to schools guidelines, because it puts students at a longer traveling distance and across a significant corridor, high-volume corridor, considered by ODOT a high-crash corridor. So the safe routes to schools advocates have really advocated against making this change. The second one that's really important, and especially for consistency in our boundary work, is that we do have a policy that tries to guide us against separating a small group of children from a cohort. And this definitely qualifies as that. The assessment is that it's just about one kid per grade that would be moved into Rose City Park. And then the third thing, in terms of just the common sense test, is that we're already, we're looking at Rose City Park opening at 100% capacity and the potential of being over-enrolled effective basically immediately. So there aren't really any compelling reasons to make this shift. And there are some, some good reasons and some existing policy guidelines that compel us to remove this from this proposal. And I guess the last one, too, is that Alameda School had boundary changes a few years ago and is still digesting the effects of those boundary changes. So it's not overcapacity at this time, so not necessarily looking for a relief valve. So to me, it's really a question of being consistent with our existing guidelines and having a kid-centered lens. And so for those reasons, I'd like to put forward that modest amendment to leave that Alameda boundary essentially as it was, at 57th and Sandy.
Is there a second?
Second.
I just admonished the audience that please maintain a respectful environment. So it's been first and seconded, and some discussion. Maybe I'd ask the committee to, members of the enrollment and forecasting committee, if this is something that was, there was discussion about, or... How many students is this?
Would it be possible to get the superintendent Guerrero, would it be possible to get the staff who helped develop this to come up and talk about the logic of that particular boundary change?
I think that would need to be the next step, is to just look specifically at that area and kind of provide that background.
And if we want, I mean, I don't know if staff wants to do that now, but if we want to move forward with this amendment tonight as written and examine this issue and how it jibes and/or conflicts with our existing policies through the enrollment and transfer committee, that would be fine with the potential of possibly making adjustments that bring us into consistent adherence with our guidelines. I don't have a-
Go ahead, Director Sparza-Brown.
What's compelling about this is really wanting to look at how many students the total number is, and looking at the impact on Rose City Park, which will be at capacity. And likely, if it's a small number of students, it may not bring a lot of relief, so it may not really help that situation. But I'm wondering also, if within the other boundaries, have we looked at those safe routes? I know we've had some discussion of that, but maybe they-
I think it has been part of most of the analysis. That's why it's kind of, this is a bit of an outlier.
Except for, I would just say, if you're a student at Vestal on the other side of 82nd, you're walking across 82nd.
Yeah.
So I just think, I don't, I don't want to diminish it. I just think we, we live in a very urban environment. Kids are crossing 84 on the overpasses. So it is one factor that's outlined in our policies, if things were to consider. Maybe, Director Constam, you mentioned that we could go ahead and proceed with the resolution as it is. And since the enrollment and forecasting committee is going to be meeting in any way to take up Director Anthony's request that we'll add this to the list. So because our general counselor isn't here tonight, and I'm not sure if it's allowable under Robert's Rules of Orders to withdraw something-
You can withdraw an amendment.
You can withdraw?
And I'm happy to have this, happy to have it be discussed within enrollment and transfer. To me, it's really more the issue about, you know, separation of such a small group from a cohort, which is something that we try to pay a lot of attention to with the West Side work and, you know, all of our work. And it never works out perfectly. But it's just, it's worth examining sort of the cost-benefit analysis.
Okay. So we have two issues at least. And I know that also, I guess, as long as we're giving, as long as I'm not on the committee and we're giving issues to that committee. I really, this issue of Vernon and Beaumont and the facility space, and whether we can't move those kids into a functioning middle school so that they have that experience, I guess, I just want to know, how hard is it? It may be really hard, and we're a couple years out, but it, I don't know that. So I would ask the committee chair to entertain that as well. I know we already have it in our resolution.
Yeah. That's clearly, this thing just is-
You're on.
Whatever.
Yes, that's on our agenda. Dr. Parker, we need to meet soon.
So Director Bailey, you need to actually move the red line changes to the amendment because, so we, the resolution that was posted in our board packet, you made some red line changes, and you need to move those to be included in the, into the resolution.
Amended amendment.
Right. Okay. One at a time?
I think you can move the entire package.
Well, there's, I'm not going to move quite the entire package because I got a little overzealous and want to-
Okay, so-
So we have amended language to the, which specifies, street by street, the boundary to Rose City Park. Do I need to read all of that?
No, I think Director Hewson has it, and that was available and posted.
And that's just correcting, you know, going and viewing the satellite map and actually getting the, a couple of streets corrected. So that's in there. Secondly, part A of that, I just want to clip that to the first sentence. The Vietnamese dual-language immersion program will move to Rose City Park. We'll just leave that there. Keep it simple. Deal with articulation later on. The third amendment's-
I'm sorry, why are you dropping the articulation?
Yeah.
Because I took it all the way to high school, and at this point, we don't, apparently we don't have, I should have checked with staff first. My apologies. I made a mistake.
Can you be clear, Scott, what you're referring to right now?
So this, the second sentence talks about articulating into a middle, into Roseway Heights as the program ages up. And I get really excited and through in Madison as a high school immersion program. And apparently, we don't have any real high school immersion articulation anywhere at this point.
I appreciate the enthusiasm, Director Bailey, for full immersion pre-K-12 pathways in the district. At a minimum, I would want to suggest that we would explore, looking at what would it look like to, and come back at a later date, if we were interested in a 912 Vietnamese pathway at a particular school like Madison that you've named here. The language as is would commit us to it without a study about it.
So we're Rose City Park and Roseway Heights, but you're stopping, you're deleting the Madison?
Right. Yes.
Okay. Ms. Hewson, tracking that? Okay.
Third piece deletes a paragraph that shouldn't have been there. I think the wrong paragraph deleted, and substitutes a paragraph that says-
The voice of God.
What? There we go. Okay. Thank you. The new paragraph reads, "Students currently enrolled in grades K4 at Roseway Heights who live in the new Scott boundary will have the guaranteed, right to guaranteed transfer to Scott." And so, that's two, a new to be, to be or not to be, we've got a new to be.
This is, by the way, for those following at home, this is E in the recitals. So everything he's been talking about is under E.
Thank you. And that's, that's parallel to our language that was already in there for Lee. And finally, I just added a clarifying phrase that when we do come back with options for King, they will come back to the board, for the board to consider. That's just more grammar than anything else.
Yeah.
Just explain what's happening with King. Maybe just read the, what the language you added.
So the, prior to December 31st, 2018, and sooner is finer with me, PPS will develop options, and here's the new language, to be presented to the PPS Board of Directors for continue, increasing enrollment at King K5 in order to create two robust neighborhood non-immersion strands. So it's just saying, come back to the board, is the language that was added.
So do we have a second?
Second.
So it's moved, the package of amendments is moved by Director Bailey, seconded by Director Anthony. Any board discussion? Director Rosen, you have anything you want to? Anybody else?
Just again, to encourage a lot of creative problem-solving around enrollment, boosting enrollment at Martin Luther King Jr., I think it's high priority.
I think to reiterate the commitment that we have to wherever we're landing with enrollment right now, that we're committing to the resources needed to have equal programming next year.
So we have a, any other discussion about the amendments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Student Representative Tran?
Yes.
The board approves the amendment seven to zero with student representative Tran voting yes. Any other discussion or amendments? Director Anthony?
Director Bailey, I very much appreciate, oh, sorry. Hi. I'm sorry, I didn't want to- Yes, we see who the problem is. I do appreciate you speaking up for MLK and saying earlier is better. I would like to propose that we put a date on it, item J, which is MLK, strike prior to December 31st, 2018, and insert to be implemented in fall 2018. I think, as it is now, we'd be putting it off two years. Can we move it up one?
So I'm just going to remind the board that this is, we're committing to a lot of things. And we also, I think, we've been really clear with staff that we want them laser-focused on, we don't want another rough start to a new middle school. So I think that you're going to find support for your amendment, but I just, I want us to be realistic about what staff can accomplish. And if we continue to prioritize the middle schools, and yes, if we can, if we can accomplish the other pieces. So if you want to move your amendment? Okay. So Ms. Hewson, did you get the amendment? It's changing the date from December 2018 to December, no?
Well, it would be to be implemented in the fall of 2018.
Okay, to be implemented in the fall of 2018. Is there a second? I'll second it. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to offer something, but I think Chair Brem Edwards beat me to the punch. I also appreciate your enthusiasm, Dr. Anthony, Director Anthony. And as much as we're also interested in making sure MLK is a robust and thriving school community, we are operating at organizational capacity. So we can revise our proposed costs to ramp up that capacity, and we'll have to revise if we need to bring aboard a whole lot more staff who have expertise in this area to even begin to contemplate further actions on a completely another school site right now. And I want to be able to do that in a thoughtful manner. So I just hope that gets considered.
Any discussion?
That's exactly why I put that date in there. And I put it in, in part, as a placeholder, but also to, we would have the opportunity to ask the staff. And I'm going to report on this later on in terms of the Panasonic Foundation trip. But our staff is way over capacity, and that's the truth. And we have to be really focused on getting a few things done really well this year. And that's not where we want to be, but that's where we are.
Perhaps this is a good time to share a little reflection on how senior staff and myself spent yesterday evening, meeting with members of the Tubman community, as well as their proposed feeder, parent leaders, school leadership from each of the sites that are contemplating this move. And you heard some public comment tonight about the tall order in front of us. Much of that is not so much about the facility, which itself is a task, but it's about being very thoughtful about the programmatic design. We're not doing this work in the middle schools to create more of the same, but to actually start to incubate a design for the future. And that's going to take all of our energy. And we heard loud and clear, they want a specific plan, they want to be included. We'll have to launch entire sets of work groups so that they can inform the process. We have the critical factor of staffing, staffing that's committed to working in the school community, that's inclined to work, serving the students in the neighborhood who have the background, the skill set, who are able to inform the curricular design of that school. So I've heard very clearly from the very beginning that the board, and I share this, that we want to, we want to open two middle schools as successfully as possible. that we want to, we want to open two middle schools as successfully as possible, and we'll continue to build from, from the opening in year one. But that's going to require Herculean effort, and I just, I, it would be, I need to be thoughtful about underlining that on behalf of the entire staff, who is already working double time on many of these components. And I'll also remind us, it isn't just about the two middle schools, there's a lot of other displacement and shifting program placement, and a lot of other considerations that come along with this pretty landmark resolution that you're considering tonight. So I don't think many of us would disagree with a lot of the smaller, finer points that you're raising. It's, it, but at some point, it becomes a bit much to bite off, and I just want to be realistic because I think it's important to manage the expectation.
But again, I mean, wasn't that the discussion of why we have talked in previous board meetings that we will resource the schools as we are working on boundaries to right-sized programs? So that starting in the fall, we're, we're not going to be dealing with inequitable programs.
Yes, and a single strand neighborhood program is, even if you throw more resources at it, is not where we want to be.
Not where we want to be.
Well, right.
Right. But given where we're at, we can at least try to mitigate as much as we can to, as a, as we're moving forward to creating the right-sized school.
And, and that again is in, in the resolution, and something when it comes to budget time...
Yes.
We need to be vigilant about that, I'm sure staff will also be vigilant about that, but we need to make sure that we engage with those school communities that we recognized are under-enrolled right now, to ensure that we are adequately staffing them. Adequately, equitably staffing.
Other discussion?
I guess, yeah, I guess one thing. I think we all, I don't know how to put this. We are where we are. I think we all know where we are, which is not where we ought to be and where we want to be, and we, we're trying to get to a place where every student gets the educational opportunities they deserve. And it's been a long time that we haven't been doing that. What we're trying to do now is to unwind some of the, I'll just say it, bad decisions that have been made in the past. It's going to take us a while to get to the point where we need to be. So I just want to make sure, I, I feel compelled to say this out loud, everybody's going to have to sort of manage their expectations over the next year. What you're seeing up here is us trying to come up with the best solution we can.
But that's what's a problem, is that you guys have this meeting that you get to have publicly, and we get maybe three minutes to speak, and meanwhile, the only thing that I heard that, that at all is interesting to me is what Guerrero had talked about, having people that are impacted at the table, there are no teachers here, there are no students here, they can tell you firsthand account, everything that a middle school is facing in all the middle schools in Portland. And you guys are still having your own private conversations about things that you don't have roots in, that's problematic. And we don't have any agency to give you any feedback besides three minutes in which we get cut off. So you wonder why people are upset, pissed, don't even want to come to these meetings? Where is our power and agency to take it all away? Just because we, some people voted this group, look around. Where are the differences? Where are the representation in the community of Portland? Because I don't see it in this group. You bring with you what you bring with you, period. I hear classism and racism, over and over and over, and nobody stops to talk about it. Nobody in here says, "No, this is not okay." It's not okay. Make a different system.
I'm not saying it's okay. And four months ago, I was exactly where you are, out there complaining, and I, I'm up here complaining now.
I just want to say that access doesn't even care if we get a full program.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, all, all I'm trying to...
You think you had an opportunity to speak?
All I'm trying to say here is, we're doing, we're doing what we can, part of what we need to do is to actually engage with communities in a meaningful way, which we haven't been all that great at in the past. And I think what you're seeing from Superintendent Guerrero is a real commitment to do that. And this is just the beginning. This is going to have to be, this is going to have to be all hands on deck to make this happen and happen well. And that includes all of the staff, it includes us, it includes school communities, working together to co-create these schools, and to make sure that the remaining K-5s are, are, are thriving and fully staffed, regardless of enrollment. We, we need to make this work, and the only way we're going to do it is if we work together.
So we have an, we have an amendment on, on the table. Did you want to speak, Director Asparza Brown? So we needed a dispense with the amendment, so either, so I'm going to ask, Director Anthony, would you like us to proceed to vote, to vote on it? Okay. Any other comments before we vote on the amendment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No?
This is Paul's amendment regarding the testing.
I think it was three to three.
Oh, regarding that.
MLK. Resolution.
Can you call that again, please, Director Brem Edwards? So I'm just going to ask Ms. Hewson to just call the roll call, it seemed to be a...
Be clear on the exact amendment language, please.
Director Anthony?
Sure, for Item J, deleting, prior to December 31st, 2018, and replacing with, "to be implemented in fall 2018." And that's, options to be presented to the PPS Board of Directors for increasing enrollment at King K-5.
So just to be clear, you use the word implementation, the language in here is to develop options, so would exploring options for MLK by the fall of 18 satisfy the spirit of what you're proposing? When you say implementing, I'm not so sure what we would be implementing, I just need better direction.
I'm sorry, it, it's not a clear sentence, I was trying to make the change as simple as possible. The idea is that MLK would open in the fall of 2018 with a healthy enrollment. So I was leaving open when we would be considering those options.
Before we have a roll call vote, I'm just going to explain why I'm going to be a no vote, I'm going to be a no vote because I think, because if staff has the capacity to do this earlier, I'll be fully supportive. But I'm hesitant to override the rest of the work, so that's, but it's, but if it can be done earlier, I think you probably would have the enthusiastic support. You'd have my enthusiastic support.
There's certainly an interest on the part of staff to explore, what is the kind of programming that we can augment at the site? But if, if the board is looking for, to develop a plan that could be implemented in the coming fall that will guarantee increased enrollment, that's, that's a very nearly impossible task right now from my vantage point, not without a whole lot of other resources.
Ms. Hewson, can you call the roll?
Director Rosen? Director Bailey?
No.
Director Asparza Brown?
No.
Director Moore?
No.
Director Anthony?
Yes.
Director Konstant?
No.
Chair Brem Edwards?
No.
Motion fails.
Motion fails on a six to one vote, oh, I'm sorry, Student Representative Tran?
No.
So the motion fails on a six to one vote, with Student Representative Tran voting no. Are there any other amendments?
One last point of discussion before we leave this is just to remind ourselves and everyone that we are engaging in review of our focus option programs, and part of the issues that we're, we're looking at in terms of our under-enrolled schools is all the students and families that live in those neighborhoods who aren't attending their neighborhood schools. And so, you know, we're going to do everything that we can to make the programming in every neighborhood school compelling enough that if you live down the street, you're going to want to go there, but at the same time, we're going to be looking at all those other relief valves that are there in the system that send kids away from their neighborhood schools, and that then, you know, create this downward or this negative cycle that doesn't allow us to have the strong, robust neighborhood schools that we need. And Martin Luther King Jr. is a good example of that, and Vestal's a good example of that. So I really look forward to all the strategies we can use to boost up enrollment from those neighborhood families.
Any other discussion? Okay, so I think at this time, we have a, we have Resolution 5534, as amended. Would somebody like to move it?
We already did.
Already did, thank you. It was so long ago. So at this time, I'm going to call for a vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Student Representative Tran?
Yes.
The Resolution 5534, as amended, passes seven to zero with the Student Representative voting yes. So thank you, everybody who came tonight and participated in, in the discussion, and this is going to be an ongoing work for the district, both at the board and the staff level. At this time, we're going to shift gears and ask that, we have Kevin Spelman, who's with the Bond Accountability Committee, come forward and provide us with our quarterly report.
Chair Brem Edwards, members of the board, Superintendent, I'm Kevin Spelman, I'm Chair of the Bond Accountability Committee, and I'm joined today by Tom Peterson, who's served on the committee since the outset of the 2012 bond, he's recently retired from long service as Chief Engineer of the Port of Portland. Your committee met on October 25th in the library of the new Fabian School, and it's really nice to be able to take advantage of these new facilities. We're working with staff on slightly changing the format of the reporting, since we now have the 2017 bond to address as well, and that's kind of a work in progress, but we're, we're making some progress. Clear highlight of the quarter, of course, was the opening of the schools, Franklin, Roosevelt, and Fabian. We'll try to be brief, you've had a long evening already. At this time, the, the following work is being managed by PPS. Closeout of Phase Two, construction at Roosevelt High School, and work on Phases Three and Four. Closeout of construction at Franklin, also at Fabian. Construction work and agreement on the guaranteed maximum price at Grant High School, which I think is before you this evening. Construction still on improvement project IP-16, and that's just the elevator work remaining at Chavez. Plus, of course, the planning for Kellogg Middle School, and Madison, Lincoln, and Benson High Schools, plus the health and safety work covered by the 2017 bond. We looked at, of course, as we always do, looked at the 2012 budget, the total program now stands at $586 million, of which almost 400 million had been spent as of October 1, 68 percent. This is a little bit of a broken record, but our remaining reserves and contingencies are skinnier and skinnier. But staff has been doing a pretty good job of trying to balance the closeout of the schools, minimizing costs, obviously, as well as dealing with Grant High School, we'll talk a little more about that. That budget has had to increase somewhat. On the positive side, the final bonds for 2012 were sold, and they generated a bond premium of almost $10 million that obviously comes back in the program, and it's very welcome. Closeout work continues on the completed schools, and there are multiple cost issues still to be worked through, and that always will take a while, these projects are complicated. Final numbers clearly are not in, but the current projections have the total cost for those three schools, with a combined budget of $265 million, coming in within $150,000 of that number. The largest budget issue remaining in the 2012 bond, but it has implications for '17 certainly, is Grant High School. Since our last meeting, staff had continued to work on this, and at our recommendation, secured some third-party pricing and validation of the, of the cost. Project schedules, we're really now only dealing with Grant High School, effectively, and obviously, work has started there, and the schedule calls for that to, that school to be done, an open 2019-20 school year. Safety, I just want to touch on that, there were no accidents in your program in the last quarter, once again, that's pretty impressive. We are continuing to work on the various audits, we've had a couple of construction audits, which is normal, on CMGC work, and we've also have the last summer's performance audit report, and because of the increased workload of the 2017 bond, we're, we're going to deal with those in a subcommittee framework, and we're trying to arrange some times with staff to do that. 2017?
I am going to talk about 2017. Staff has, has hit the ground running, so lots of good progress.
Can you get close to your mic?
I'm sorry, can you hear me better?
Yeah.
Okay. So lots of good progress to date, I've got project majors assigned, they're getting geared up for all the safety programs, got a preliminary plan for how they want to sequence things, so, so far, they're off to a pretty good start. We do have some concerns about the early schedules, now we do realize that it's still very early in the, in the planning stage, but at first blush, it looks like they may be a little overly conservative on the durations for, particularly in the construction side, and so we, we would hope there's still some sense of urgency to kind of make sure we, we get these schools delivered as quickly as we can. Understand that, you know, we had a lot of challenges in the first phase, some of which were driven by some concurrent activities in the first phase that we aren't, we've already completed, so they should be less of an issue in my mind going forward. So, so I'm still thinking they should be able to come up with maybe a little better timeframes for the delivery of the high schools in particular. But all in all, they're off to a great start, I think they've got a good, good, good plan in place. Clearly, based on their performance in the last four years, they, they've been up with a challenge, and I'm confident that, you know, take all the lessons that they've learned in this last round, and apply them in this next round. learned in this last round and apply them in this next round, and they'll have a successful program. And I look forward to continuing to monitor the progress, this, this amazing undertaking that you guys are taking on, so.
I have a question of Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
So with the concerns that the BAC has raised about the proposed construction schedule for the 2017 bond, has, has staff looked at, or has the BAC discussed what the escalation cost is associated with essentially an extra year of construction for each of those high schools?
I don't think we got into that level of detail. So, but yes, time is money. It works both ways. You build it too fast, it costs you money. You build it, take it too long, it costs you money. So finding that sweet spot is what it's really all about. And I think that's what we're going to be, want to focus on, is finding that duration that's reasonable, but still gets them done in a timely manner.
And following up on that, how hard is it to come up with a dollar estimate on that extra year?
Well, I'd have to ask staff.
Okay.
They're the ones who would have to pull those numbers together. We're still, I think they've, they've established the budgets for, for each of the schools, but we haven't gone into great detail so that I understand, to the extent where we understand, okay, this is how much escalation and how it affects the schedule. I suspect that'll be a topic for the next time we meet.
Good, thank you.
I appreciate what you're saying about that it does go both ways, because we did pay some premiums for being crunched before and having a lot of overtime work and really feeling like that was too tight. But we've added essentially an entire year, even after master planning and presuming that there'll be no scope change like there was with the other projects. So I do have some concern about the, the proposed schedules that we're not delivering value to our kids and our taxpayers as timely as we could.
I, I wouldn't want to give the impression, though, that staff is, is, has set the schedule in stone.
Yeah.
And we're pushing on it. And we are pushing on it, but, but staff is open to suggestions and continuing to work on this. And, and that's the kind of pressure we'll bring to bear, so.
So I guess one thing, and it's just because you're here, but I, I guess, having gone through the whole conversation we just had, that you sat through with, I mean, a lot of these issues are, you know, we have the same staff in many ways that are managing or overseeing or leading some of these sort of facilities projects related to not the big, the big rebuilds, but getting some of our schools that really need to get into shape. And I guess I'm, I'm concerned about how thin we're stretching the staff. I think we've had, they've done a heroic job to sort of keep things moving. But I guess I'd be interested in sort of your perspective of just the, the impact of if we were to accelerate things or, you know, change things, just the impact on staff here?
I think, I think we have to remember that the staffing of the major projects, which is where our concern is, are dedicated bond personnel. So they're not distracted by other issues within the district. Now, the, the district has not fully staffed up yet with bond people for each of those schools, and is probably premature on, on a couple of them. But they have appointed project managers, they've got leadership in place. So they've made real progress in this last quarter in staffing. So I think we're happy with that.
I guess I would just say, like, to hire staff and do all those things requires time on behalf of our leaders. So I, again, I think we're just in a, not a fragile state, but we are not, don't have a full team. And I just want to be cognizant of what we're asking our staff. And certainly, if you see things that you think that, from the board's perspective, more support or resources, we certainly expect that you raise it with Superintendent Guerrero or with the board, because we want to deliver on both, but realize that we sort of, the leadership rests with somewhat the same people.
Interesting. And I guess just to put a clarification, my concerns, this one.
Can you hear me? Oh, there we go.
There we go.
My concerns are not so much with what they're doing right now, because I think they're doing everything. I'm more concerned about the expectations that they're setting for the contractors and the delivery.
Right.
Which is not necessarily as much of a staffing issue as it is how you write your contracts and what your expectations are for delivery. And those are, yet, those contracts have yet to be let, so there's still plenty of time to sort out those details and really understand, are, are there opportunities to improve the constructions? That's really all I'm talking about. I'm not talking about the upfront stuff. And I agree, having listened to the testimony earlier, they are spread thin right now. So I...
Yeah. But not our internal capacity. And not just construction, but a little room probably on the design side as well.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Any questions, but board members?
I don't know if it's a dumb question or not, and maybe you're not the right guys to ask, but we have a bond. It's got things in it. It's got money. You get to the end, and stuff has happened. And, you know, the good part of that is that you're really budgeting tightly. And the bad thing of that is that if you're the last school, value engineering becomes, you find out what that is.
Right.
Is there any way to, I mean, we're going to be on this bond train for 30 years. Is there any way to smooth that out a bit?
I, I think, again, we have to...
How do other districts do this? Is, is, is that how things are done?
What, I think, in our experience, what we've seen with the 2012 bond is not unusual. And we have to remember that each bond program is independent. So it's not like we can dip into 2017 to pay for shortages in 2012. I, I should have mentioned, we did have some public comment at our meeting that's relevant, so there's a little. And it was concern about the deferred work for IP-17.
Yeah.
Which is kind of off the table at this point. And quite how that's going to be dealt with is, is something we need to pay attention to.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I like the no safe, no accidents.
Yes.
It's good to hear.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the work that you continue to do for, for both the school district and the students.
Thank you.
At this time, we're also going to get a quarterly update on capital bonds. Mr. Vincent?
Good evening. I have with me Dan Young, our Senior Director of Office of School Modernization. And I wasn't going to do this, but I think I need to, especially after the Tubman conversation. So we are trying to go cradle to grave on a bunch of schools in nine months. There are people who can't get their home kitchen remodeled in six to eight months. We just need to understand that. Because when we talk about taking these large schools and getting them done sooner, you need to know what we know. We know 24 months didn't work. We know we paid a lot of overtime. We know that Roosevelt was 265,000 square feet, Franklin 284, Grant 293. We know Benson is 400,000 square feet before we even touch it. And that's on 365,000 square foot lot. How does that even work? We know Lincoln is going to be 10 stories tall. We know it's built over, it's going to be built over a landfill that has an active river running underneath it. We know that when the city is done working us over on permitting, the Goose Hollow Planning Commission, which caused two portable buildings that cost $1 million each, wants to take a shot at us. And if you don't think that that takes time, and if that, you know, on the design and on the construction, we're just setting expectations that nobody can meet. And if it's been 78 years on average since we had a school, another year isn't going to change things. But let's just say this, if it's not 24, it's 36. Are we prepared to do a mid-year opening? Do we know what that looks like? I've done them in California. They're ugly. And transportation departments, they're ugly. So what does it matter if it's 30, or if it's 31? In Lincoln, when, once we get done with the tower, we have to abate and demolish an entire high school. I've done over 600 projects. I've never done an entire high school, abate and demolish, ever. This is unprecedented. And then when we're done doing that, we have to build fields and sports complex back. What's the hurry? And if we can get the contractor off the clock in 30 months, great. We don't do a mid-year opening. Add a time for commissioning, add a time for furniture move-in, actually do a dedication and ribbon cutting in the building during the April, instead of trying to quickly throw something together in August, and some people are back, some people aren't, legislators aren't in. But it doesn't matter. We get the contractor off the clock. That's the escalation factor. So unless some of these comments are because they need to be for political constituents, we know what we're doing, and these projects are amazing. There is no construction lay-down area for Benson and Lincoln. Contractors are going to have to rent parking lots somewhere, have the materials brought in just-in-time delivery system. They're going to have to rent another parking lot for their, for their workers and cars. They're going to have to rent an office building somewhere as their headquarters, because you can't put trailers on these sites. There's no room. So I just, I appreciate it. I'm not acting like the whole sage on the stage, but 30 years of K-12, 17 bombs, over 600 projects, I beseech you, because it won't be me, or anybody here might not be here seven years from now, but OSM is going to be, how can we even get that thing open? And everybody else will be gone. But we'll be here. And so I just, please, think about what you're saying. Tubman is going to be ridiculous. If it doesn't work, it's going to be my name. And I already got that. I already know that. But I'm up for the challenge. So please, be careful with these comments. We're supposed to apply our lessons learned, and that's what we're trying to do. So with that, I'd like to turn over to Dan.
Okay. Good evening. The information provided in your packets tonight is, corresponds to the information that's provided to the Bond Accountability Committee on October 25th. What we do with that information is pretty much current as of the very, the first day of October. So some of that, that data is a little bit stale, but we do it so when we report, it's consistent data between the Bond Accountability Committee and ourselves. A couple of quick program items before I jump into the projects. From a staffing perspective, we filled out vacancy last month when we hired Jesse Steiger as the Senior Project Manager for Madison High School. Jesse comes from, to us from Washington State University, where she just completed a project at their Everett campus. So she has a very impressive background, and we're very happy to have her on board. I also want to take a quick moment to thank our longstanding program manager, Ken Fisher, as this is likely his last board meeting. Ken will be leaving the program at the end of December. He has been with us since the bond passed in 2012, and he will be sorely missed for his leadership, his knowledge, his tact, and his steady hand. So I just want to personally say thank you to Ken, and a lot of the successes that this program has had has been due to him. So thank you, Ken.
You're here.
Yeah.
Fortunately, Ken will only be a phone call away. He will still be remaining with HIRI International, and Ken, Scott Parlow will be stepping into his shoes. Scott is actually with the program very early on, has been with OHSU the last few years, and he'll be stepping back in. So we're happy to have Scott back. Jumping into project information, since we last met in late August, Fabian, Franklin, Roosevelt, Phase Two, and Grant at Marshall all opened on time. A lot of great work by the project teams, the support staff, the schools, the community, the board, everybody. So we're very happy about that and very proud about that work. Regarding Franklin, this project is nearing completion. We're still finishing up the solar panels that are on the covered walkway. Those are all installed now. We're just programming those, so those should be done soon. And then we've got a number of loose ends that we're finishing up there, but we hope to be pretty much out of there and all documents turned over to facilities by the end of the year. Roosevelt, Phase Two, is also progressing towards final completion. Most of that punch list is done, but we've got a few outstanding items there. HVAC commissioning is one of our bigger ones that we're still working on. And then Phase Three, the site work, that will continue into winter. So that's going on right now. That's progressing well. And the last building is being demoed out there. The old auto shop building is going down right now. Probably on the ground by the end of this week. Fabian, we're finishing up punch list and a few other outstanding items there as well, but should have that project fully turned over by next month as well. So that one's coming along. Grant, as we heard a little bit earlier, abatement and demolition is going on out at the site at the moment. As noted in your packets, we have completed the negotiations for the guaranteed maximum price with Anderson Construction, Anderson Colas Construction. A lot of hard work for really, in over two years culminating into that guaranteed maximum price. That's in your packets for tonight and up for approval tonight. And though there have been some pretty significant schedule challenges on the front end of this, we're still looking at a very good opening grant in fall of 2019. Kellogg Programming is well underway with that team and that design team, meeting with internal and external stakeholders, stakeholders. The team has been meeting for the last couple of months and has had two DAG meetings already, and we'll have a third one here next, next week, next Thursday, I think it is. We have our master planning cost estimate in, and that shows us just slightly over budget, which we're happy to see. We have, we have plans of how we're going to get that back into budget. So we will be back in front of you before too long with a master plan approval. We're currently on schedule to open Kellogg as part of the agreed schedule in fall 2021, but we do have our continuing efforts to complete that project early. And to some of the comments by Kevin and Tom, we were intentionally conservative with the dates that we put out before. But that said, we are starting everything as quickly as we can to try and beat those times. So we're out of the gate on Kellogg. We're out of the gate on Madison as well. I noted that Jesse Steiger has taken over the helm of that as the Senior Project Manager. We recently finalized the contract with Opsis Architecture, so they're doing kickoff, and they're starting to meet with stakeholders as we speak. And we're currently recruiting for DAG members for that. So we expect to have a DAG meeting sometime in December. It will be that first DAG meeting. So that project is out of the gates as quickly as we could get it. We are comfortable with meeting the schedule to reopen Madison in 2022, but are, of course, aggressively looking for ways to, to beat that schedule. Lincoln, similarly, we have a target date of opening that in fall of 2023. We're effectively starting that project now as well. We're going to be recruiting for the DAG. That will open by the end of this month. We're going to have the design team under contract for the first phase in December, and that project's going to be starting out of the gate as well. So we want to start these as early as we can to give us the best opportunity to get them completed and open as early as we can. Benson is, is a little bit further out. We did get the Master Planning Committee back together here a couple of weeks ago and gave them an update. We're doing an industry outreach effort that's going to culminate this spring, and then we'll move into design after that. I think we're going to have a health and safety update here, so I'll touch on health and safety just briefly. Work is proceeding on all fronts on health and safety. Design is underway for roof improvements, fire alarm, fire sprinkler upgrades, accessibility improvements, and asbestos abatement work. A lot of the bigger work, we're designing now with the intention of starting construction the beginning of summer, but then that will just become rolling work throughout the school year and throughout the summers. We will target the large stuff, our roof replacements over the summer, of course. But any work that we can do during the school year, we will continue to design and plan and complete over the school year. I think that's, that's it. Mr. Yer, anything else to add?
No, nothing else.
Any questions?
Just want to say again, looking back at the 2012 bond, considering that, you know, it was our first bond, there was a lot we didn't know because there wasn't master planning.
That's right.
That a year in, we upped the high schools from 1,500 to 1,700, that we upped the square footage per student as well, which just ate up a ton of our contingency reserve, if not all of it. Given all that, you guys have done a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we, we just give, we give a lot of credit to our, to our HIRI.
That means Ken, that means the Bond Accountability Committee, the, the whole, the whole team.
Very much a team effort.
Yeah.
It really is. That we, you know, when I got here, I was very nervous. A couple of years ago, we have 13 people down in Office of School Modernization, a little over 20-some with our HIRI folks. And it's now over 1.4, 1.5 billion we're doing with that. It just is tight, you know? And, and what we needed to do that, because of the margins, because of what went out in the beginning of the bond, right? We needed to do that. So we're also trying to look at that as lessons learned for the new bond as well.
Thank God for zero interest rates.
And I do want to commend just the lessons learned process, both in terms of the edspex, like really revising the edspex for the 2017... for the two thousand and seventeen projects based on all the feedback from two thousand and twelve, schedule, construction management issues. I mean, you really have put in a concerted process to figure out what went right, what went wrong first time around, and improve upon things.
Yeah, thank you. And it continues. We're actually bringing a design team on board to help us do some more lessons learned and update those documents.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We're next.
Yes, you are. So because this item came out of the Finance Audit and Operations Committee, I'm going to ask Director Moore to introduce it, and...
Only if you need assistance from it.
We're going to make it try. Okay, I'm going to try. So Resolution Number Fifty-five thirty-six is authorization to move four million dollars of the program-level bond reserve to the OSM school reserves. Okay, so this is, and we got a very long and detailed and good presentation about this at the committee. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that basically what we're talking about is kind of an accounting, this is an accounting process. We have reserves that have been, that are sitting in an account for the entire bond program, so the two thousand and twelve bond program. And this resolution allows that four million dollars to be moved to a Grant High School-specific account.
That's correct. You start to move what you have to your last project in the bond.
Okay, and this has occurred with every bond project, at least the major, the high school, the big projects. So it happened with Roosevelt, happened with Franklin. It's now happening with Grant. And this will, I believe, essentially extinguish the full bond reserves. Is that correct?
It does at the program level, but Dan can talk to it. So what you're adding, you're bringing everything into the last project, which is Grant, but then Grant has its design contingencies, its construction contingencies, and all those kinds of things too. So yes, it's the way you would want a bond to end, unless you could end a bond with hundreds of millions of dollars of extra money. You would want a bond to end, your money and your finish line come together, so yes.
So we're moving it from the savings account to the checking account.
There you go, there you go.
I guess I should also say the committee approved, recommended approving this resolution.
So do I have a motion?
Second.
A second. The resolution has been moved by Director Bailey, seconded by Director Anthony. Any discussion? Not. Call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Student Representative Tran?
Yes.
Motion that resolution passes, seven to zero, with Student Representative Tran voting aye. Let's see. Thank you.
Unless you'd like to do the school board election, the school board association elections.
Yes, enough to do.
So now we're going to move to, there's a series of Oregon School Board Association elections, and there is both elections for members of the board, but also a resolution related to the Oregon School Boards Association, or also OSBA, as we call it. So there's a lot of seats, so I'm just going to move through the process. And I've asked, because he's neither a candidate, but he's not a candidate, but he's on the board of OSBA. I'm going to ask Director Anthony to make the motions, to make motions. And if he moves a candidate on a contested race that you'd like to vote for somebody else, the procedure would be, you would vote down, you would vote against the candidate that he moves, and then if that candidate is not, it does not gain a majority, then we'd move to the next candidate.
So for Position Seventeen on the OSBA Board of Directors, do I have a motion to support Mary Botkin from Multnomah ESD or Michelle Voe from Corbett?
I move that we support Michelle Voe from Corbett.
A second.
It's been moved by Director Anthony, seconded by Director Constam. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. No, Director, Student Rep Tran?
Aye.
Michelle Voe in Position Seventeen is approved. Going on to, okay, John Lindenthal from Reynolds is running unopposed for Position Seventeen on the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee. I'm just going to, since he's unopposed, I'm going to ask all in favor of John Lindenthal, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Student Rep Tran?
Yes.
The motion to support John Lindenthal is adopted by a seven-to-zero vote with Student Representative Tran voting yes. Chris Howitt is running unopposed in Position Eighteen for the OSBA Board of Directors. All in favor, Chris Howitt, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed. Student Rep Tran?
Yes.
Chris Howitt is approved on a seven-to-zero vote with Student Rep voting yes. For Position Eighteen on the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee, do I have a motion to support Director Constam or Dave Carter from Park Rose? Director Anthony?
I move that we support Director Amy Constam for Position Eighteen.
Can we have a full discussion of that?
It hasn't been seconded yet, I'll second it. It's been moved by Director Anthony, seconded by Director Constam, all in favor, I'm sorry, Bram Edwards, all in favor of Director Constam. Please indicate by saying yes. Yes. All opposed, say no. I think I know the answer, Moses.
Yes.
Okay. Director Constam's name is moved forward on a six-to-zero, a six-to-zero vote with one abstention, Student Rep voting yes. For Position Nineteen on the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee, do I have a motion to support Director Rita Moore or John Harstock from Gresham Barlow? Director Anthony?
I move that we support Director Rita Moore for Position Nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion by Director Anthony, a second by Director Constam. All in favor of Rita Moore for Position Nineteen on the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee, please indicate by saying yes. Yes? All opposed. Any abstentions? Please indicate, Student Rep Moses Tran. The motion passes, seven to zero, and Student Rep voting yes. Our last vote is for the OSBA resolution to reorganize the Oregon School Boards Association as a nonprofit corporation and adopt the proposed two thousand and seventeen bylaws. Is there a motion?
I move that we support the OSBA resolution to reorganize as a nonprofit corporation and adopt the proposed bylaws.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved by Director Anthony, seconded by Director Bailey. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by voting yes.
Yes.
Any noes? Student Rep Tran?
Yes.
The motion passes by a vote of seven to zero with Student Rep Tran voting yes. Next, we're going to go to Board Committee and Conference Reports. And given that we're half an hour behind schedule, I'm going to ask everybody who, we have a number of people who are going to be reporting, and I'm just going to ask people to try and keep them to less than five minutes. And just so people know what the lineup is, and people decide to go first, but Directors Bailey and Moore attended the Panasonic Leadership Academy, and I think Director Bailey's going to be reporting. I think most of us went to the OSBA conferences past weekend. Director Anthony is going to be reporting on that. I think Director Moore has a short report on the Finance Audit and Operations Committee. I have a short report from the Policy and Governance Task Force. And Director Rosen, do you have a report for the Health and Safety and Accessibility Committee? Who wants to go first? Five minutes or less.
I can make it quick. The Oregon School Boards Association's seventy-first Annual Convention was in Portland this last weekend. Very successful, had more than eight hundred attendees. The primary focus was on addressing graduation rates and chronic absenteeism. Portland Public Schools' own Matthew Bacon-Brennis, social studies teacher at Mount Tabor Middle School, was recognized as Oregon's two thousand and eighteen Teacher of the Year, and I think we should all be very, very proud of him. Superintendent Guerrero came and seemed to be very, very warmly welcomed by everyone he saw. We were very happy that you were there, thank you for coming. And very significantly, Portland Public had at least six board members attend. And for many years, our participation in the OSBA and its convention had been very light. This was seriously noticed by the rest of the state. And if your ears were burning, yes, people were talking about you. And it was very, very warmly received.
In a good way.
In the best possible way. One of the most frequent workshop topics was trauma-informed practices in the classroom. I presided at two workshops on the topic, and Superintendent Guerrero attended the first, Director Moore attended the second. And I think that the work we've been doing in the Madison Cluster and with mindfulness training with peace in schools in our high schools stands up very well to other district successes. I hope that we will have a strong presence presenting next year. I also presided at workshops by Lines for Life on suicide prevention and by Carangia Cruz on Teaching with Purpose, which, again, Superintendent Guerrero attended and Director Bailey also attended. And thank you both very much for coming. Now, a brief commercial here. The Board of the OSBA met after the convention. Ballot Measure One-O-One, which is headed for a special election on January twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, will ask voters whether they support a hospital provider tax that was passed in the two thousand and seventeen legislative session. The immediate implication for education, if the measure fails, is that the state will face at least a three hundred and twenty million budget shortfall, but because of federal matching funds, the overall shortfall is anticipated to be in the billions of dollars. How such a scenario could affect the state's school fund is unclear, but because about thirty-nine percent of the general fund and lottery revenue dollars go to take K-12 education, it's very important that the OSBA and Portland Public Schools make its voice heard in support of the measure. The Board of the OSBA voted unanimously to support the passage. And I hope that our Legislative Policy Committee will be considering this very soon.
I was bringing a resolution forward?
Yes, thank you. The Board also voted unanimously formally recognize the School Board Members of Color Caucus, which is very important for the state as a whole. And a very old friend of mine, Bill Gropp, who is a member of the North Marion School Board and the mayor of Aurora, is taking a lead on it. He is the treasurer, and I'm very, very excited that that is in such good hands.
Paul, are you attending that?
Oh, you did, oh, I'm sorry, I did not realize. Wonderful. Thank you for doing that. And finally, something that's very happy for me personally, and this is an important resource going forward for Portland Public and its Board, Lori Satinschfield, who has been a longtime employee of the OSBA, was named head of their Legislative Services Department. She's now their head lobbyist, and it will be wonderful working with her. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It was a great conference. Director Rosen, are you ready to go?
So I'm going to give a quick update, kind of a broad brush of the Health, Safety, and Accessibility Committee. We've had two meetings so far, and we have a work plan. Basically, our charter is to provide support, oversight, and accountability for the one hundred and fifty million dollar portion of the two thousand and seventeen bond, which was set aside for water quality, so basically lead-in drinking water mitigation, lead paint mitigation, seismic, which is really roof replacement, radon mitigation, accessibility, which is ADA improvement, security, fire, life, safety, which is alarm and sprinkler improvement, and asbestos mitigation. And so our goal is to have a comprehensive plan in place by the end of the year to cover these items. So this is just some updates on the progress we've made so far. And all of this is covered on the website under the Health and Safety Schools page. And there's also a special article on there now just about what's going on with water quality. So for water quality, we have a fifteen-school pilot project that's underway. And so far, we've turned the water on at five schools. And we'll have an additional three schools' water turned on by Thursday. And then we should complete the remaining seven by the end of November. So we're working in groups of fifteen schools at a time, and we're hoping that we will be completing groups about every eight weeks. And we have five groups left. The target is to finish everything by the end of the school year or early into the fall of the coming school year. And we have a really nice infographic that the Communications Group and Jerry put together, which explains how you go from replacing a fixture to testing water to turning water on. For fire alarm systems, we're working with the city of Portland through an intergovernmental agreement, and that defines the process and schedule for upgrades. There's a lot of, multiple sites are underway, and we're working on the oldest systems first. For fire sprinklers, we don't have any work yet underway, but buildings are being prioritized right now based on risk. Asbestos abatement, we have some work underway and some completed. Pre-two thousand and seventeen bond, we worked on small-scale projects like pipe insulation and tile flooring, but next summer, we'll be working on bigger bond projects. And we have a draft plan and prioritization system hopefully by the end of the month. For lead paint, we've done surveys of all school surfaces. That was completed in spring two thousand and seventeen. There's over one million square feet that needs encapsulation. We've hired new painters, and we have a plan and prioritization system that's in process but should be done soon. For roof and seismic, we are developing a plan and prioritization system right now. For ADA accessibility, we have a draft transition plan that should be completed by the end of November. For radon, we have two mitigation systems that have been completed and sixteen more to be installed and completed by the spring of two thousand and eighteen. And we have a prioritization program underway. And then for security, finally, we need to initiate a stakeholder engagement process, which will begin soon. So this is all being done by Jerry and his staff in addition to everything else he does. So they're getting a lot done so far.
Great, it's great to hear the progress on a really significant issue that impacts all our schools. Director Bailey, how about the Panasonic conference?
Yes, the Panasonic Foundation is a national foundation that the district has been working with for about two years now. Their focus is on working with a small number of school districts nationally. Their staff are former superintendents and other professional educators, and it's all about technical assistance to help districts... about technical assistance to help districts improve their functioning. So we went to their latest conference, which was actually, we were very focused internally most of the time, was internal meetings, Director Moore and myself, Superintendent Guerrero, Assistant Superintendent Lopez, Brenda Fox, who's overseeing the planning for middle schools, Dr. Parker, Carol Campbell was there representing principals, and I'm missing a couple, but well, a couple are missing. The two and a half days of very intense discussions, very sobering discussions about where we were, and it's had a major impact on my thinking about what's our capacity for getting work done this year and really doubled down on our focus is to middle schools. And I think we've seen certainly adjustments in your role to get down in the weeds, to make sure we have the staffing and support and leadership to make that happen. So it was good.
Someone asked Superintendent Guerrero if there's anything you'd like to add?
I would echo. I was pleased that we were able to have a pretty frank conversation between our board directors and senior staff. We had a nice cross-section of folks who are pretty intimately engaged in making sure we open two fabulous programs. And so a lot of conversations around what that should look like, how do we incorporate community feedback, what are the elements that are going to make this a successful venture, and what does it take to do that as an organization? So there are some design features we certainly have to continue to iterate on, but there was also, this is a question that goes beyond opening two schools. This is really about incubating a design that informs all of our middle grades, wherever they are, and what does it take as a school system to be poised to offer that kind of direction, that kind of guidance? What does the instructional framework need to look like? How does it fit as part of a pre-K-12 continuum? What kind of expertise do we need as a staff? So I certainly enjoyed the opportunity to get into the weeds with some of those conversations, and I know that the staff felt that they could really kind of dive in deeply with that, and glad you were there to be a part of that conversation.
And just to reiterate, while we were focused on the two middle schools to be opened, we also were focused on Oakley Green.
Before I turn to Director Moore, I'll just provide a quick update from the Policy and Governance Task Force. We met recently, had quite a long discussion about the complaint policy. We now have a draft model policy from the Oregon School Boards Association that complies with current law. We're going to, to use a non-technical term, kind of smoosh together some of the values that come out of our current complaint policy and then drop in what is the language that's recommended by the School Boards Association that would be compliant with state law. We'll bring that to the Board for discussion and then do our process by which we solicit public input on that process. We've got lots of people who have experienced good and bad, but probably mostly recently not positive with our complaint policy. So I know we'll get lots of feedback from the community on ways that we can interact with the community in a way that provides better solutions for our families and our students. And then last, just a short update on the public records policy. We are still waiting for, there's discussions with Portland Association of Teachers just as part of their, of our policy development process. They're entitled to have a discussion with us about our new policies, so that's where that policy is. Director Moore, how about a Finance Audit and Operations Committee update?
So just a little plug for the committee meetings. For those of you who like weeds, I have a committee for you. We've got, we've had, I don't know, I want to say six or seven committee meetings so far, and we've had very full agendas for each committee. And a lot of the stuff that we have talked about in those committee meetings have already come before the Board in various resolutions. So I'm going to be pretty brief and just talk about a few of the details. One is Peach Jar. For current parents, this has been a somewhat unhappy experience, I believe, for the most part. We are no longer going to be doing Peach Jar for school communications. So we're going to go essentially back to the old policy of the principal will, the school will approve communications, and the school will be in charge of taking care of the communication flow to the school communities. Transportation. At the last meeting on the 7th, we got an update on the transportation situation. And again, for those of you following from home, you will remember that last year, we, the transportation situation was problematic. We got, we had some real issues that emerged. And Jerry Vincent and his team have worked diligently over the last, I guess, eight months-ish to address the, kind of identify what the real problems are with the transportation system and address them. In the process, they hired an external consulting firm, Transpar, that has been working very closely with the staff, with the bus drivers, the PPS bus drivers, and also with the company First Student that we contract with for most of the school buses. And things are not perfect, but they are clearly infinitely better than they have been in past years. And I'm going to say something that anybody who knows me would probably never predict, I would say. At the last meeting, Jerry Vincent had a really good PowerPoint. I am not a PowerPoint fan, but this was actually really good. And he had some kind of pithy factoids that are helpful in putting the transportation situation in context. And I'll just give you one. So PPS school buses drive approximately 18,000 miles every day. They make 3,470 daily stops, 94% of which are on time. So there has been huge progress. We want to get that extra, you know, that additional 6% going, but things are vastly better, and there are moves in place, there are plans in place, and we're going to be moving toward some real, some additional improvements, including eventually an app that will be available to parents so that they can, you know, track where the school buses are. So anyway, it was a very positive report. And again, you know, thank you to all the work that's gone into that. I think it's been a huge improvement. Also, at the last meeting, we heard a lot about the kind of situation report on Tubman, and you've already heard a lot about that, so I won't go into any more detail. And then the last thing, not at this most recent meeting, but at the previous one, we had a very long discussion about the legal department and the cost of external legal assistance. And that's, some of the work that went into that is going to be coming as part of the business agenda tonight.
Anybody else have anything to report?
Just a very quick comment on transportation. Not just an enormous quantitative improvement in transportation over last year, but the quality of people's interactions with transportation is going way, way up. I haven't had any complaints this year, and this time last year, I'd had hundreds. So again, Jerry, thank you very, very much.
Great.
We have compliments for Mr. Vincent for one night.
Jerry, you missed that.
Okay, is there any other business? So the next item is the remainder of the business agenda. We've already voted on Resolutions 5532 through 5536. Is that correct?
Yes.
Ms. Houston? Board members, are there any items you'd like to pull for a separate discussion and I am going to recommend, offer an amendment to Resolution 5531 for the legal contract. It's currently at $2 million, and we had this discussion earlier about diversifying our external legal services and transitioning part of this to in-house. And I would, I'm going to be moving that we reduce the contract amount to $200,000 from $2 million, and that we ask for a plan that's going to provide more diversity in our external legal services and how we're going to utilize our in-house legal team in a different way. And in addition to the contract amount, I would also offer that currently, it says a term from 11/15/17 through 12/31/19, and I'd like to change the first, from November 15th, 2017, to 8, to August 1st, 2017 through 12/31/19. There's some other, there's currently some invoices that have been expended, apparently just spent about $400,000 that have been expended, despite the fact that we had a resolution that had it capped at 200. So I'd like for the General Counsel's Office to come back with a plan of how we're going to diversify our legal team, because this is a...
I'd like to second that motion. Thank you.
It's been moved by Director Rosen, but just seconded by Director Anthony. Any discussion?
So, go ahead. So we had this extensive discussion on this in the Finance Audit and Operations Committee meeting with a pretty extensive presentation from the legal team, and the original request was for $4 million. So the recommendation from that committee to the Board was to halve it to 2 million. And most of the cost represented there is for litigation that we are already engaged with, underway. So there was considerable discussion from the General Counsel that cutting the request in half was potentially somewhat problematic, just given our current obligations with pending litigation.
Well, I know a very few other items that we provide a two-year budget to. So just first of all, it seemed an odd request to have it be a two-year budget. And then we also had a discussion that, a sense that we needed, there's lots of other great law firms in town, and that the district would be well-served to spread some of our work around. And we have, we do have new cases coming online, as we've seen from our 36 pages of active litigation. And I haven't seen a, I'd like the General Counsel's Office to come back with a plan that's going to get us into a position where we don't have an overreliance on, you know, one law firm to do so much of our work. Also, we've hired a lot of internal legal support, and it'd be good to see a plan about how we're going to utilize those people to do some more of the day-to-day work versus sort of outsourcing so much of it.
So this was the plan that the legal counsel brought forward to FAO with, and Roseanne, we probably still have all those documents that were posted for that, so that show the variety of different firms that the new General Counsel is using and distributing the work. So I don't know, Director Moore, do you want to speak to that presentation and discussion and how we landed where we landed?
I don't have the documents in front of me, but as I recall, we do have a fairly long list of legal firms that we have done some work with, but Miller-Nash accounts for the vast majority. I want to say something upwards of 80%-ish.
So I'm looking at a document that was provided by the General Counsel's Office that has, in 2015-16, Miller-Nash was $1.2 million out of $1.365 million total expenditures. There's a lot of firms, but some of them don't, you know, are all zeroed out. And then in 2016, Miller-Nash has $1.5 million of business and out of $1.7 million. And what I looked at, just the recent batch of invoices that we received today, there's just another, you know, $400,000 in the last three months that's been expended. And so this doesn't give me a plan, and I think the, sort of the robustness of having a discussion about how we utilize our insight, build internal capacity so we don't need to utilize really expensive external expertise, which is probably the most important time to utilize external counsel, but really start building the internal capacity with our new lawyers to handle day-to-day work.
So one of the other pieces of information we got was that since 2012, we have had a pretty substantial increase in the number of in-house attorneys within the legal department. But even as that was happening, our expenditures for outside counsel pretty dramatically increased. And it was not clear to me and I think other members of the committee what the explanation was for such an overall increase in expenditures. So we asked for, we asked for some explanation. We couldn't really get it because the current General Counsel is relatively new. So at this point, it kind of is what it is, but the committee, I think, was pretty clear in saying that these were trend lines that we wanted to reverse, that we want to bulk up the in-house counsel capacity, which would allow us to decrease external expenditures.
And I think the General Counsel also, I mean, agreed and said that he had a strategy, and it's difficult to have this conversation without him here, but that he had a strategy that he was starting to try to put in place to decrease overall external expenditures and diversify them. But with regard specifically to this contract, you know, the nature of the presentation that was made by the General Counsel to the FAO Committee was that this was almost exclusively for existing commitments for litigation that we're engaged in. So if what we're talking about is switching horses in midstream, that's a different conversation than just wanting to diversify.
So there's also some very significant expenditures around things that the Board has indicated that we are ready to wrap, would like to wrap... has indicated that we are ready to wrap, would like to wrap up and move on. And some of the, um, items that are sitting there have been, um, you know, basically, the, the bill's been running for quite a while, and, um, we need an incentive to sort of clear, clear the, um, clear the books, um, so that we have a reasonable level of litigation so that, um, we can, so that schools, um, can, and staff here can call, uh, the general counsel's office and get, um, sort of in-house ex-, um, legal advice. And we need, we need a plan, and I think just continuing to, um, you know, basically kick the can, this would kick the can down to the end of the next year, you know, till, to next year. Um, I think we are in serious need of change in how we support our schools and our families, um, with legal advice.
I have some clarifying questions to ask. You wanted to essentially backdate this to August first twenty-seventeen, and you're saying that since that period when we had authorized spending of two hundred thousand, actually four hundred thousand was spent?
So, um, when we authorized two hundred thousand, um, there must have been, um, already expenditures that had been made that hadn't been, um, there hadn't been a contract extension, um, provided for that. So, when I looked at the bills, they are from August, September, and October, so even though we had a September extension, there were, there were bills that preceded that. Um, best, best practice would be you'd have a contract allocation and you'd be drawing off that versus retroactively, um, so it...
So, if we're going to include those bills in this resolution, wouldn't we have to be above two hundred thousand?
Well, I guess, I, since today was the first time I saw that, and it was somewhat surprising, I'd like to have, hear from Jim, and we can, we can, we can cure it and just, um, make the allocation next board meeting, but it would be good to hear from Jim what, what those were.
Yeah, that would be good.
I mean, personally, I don't think it's, um, responsible to take an action on amending this, um, recommendation that came forward out of that committee without the benefit of the general counsel's input.
Um, so we can take it off the agenda and...
I, I think that's...
Have a discussion next time. But I, I think the last time the board took it off the agenda, that, um, we did express an interest in, um, getting a plan, and that the plan that came back was just essentially halving the amount that had been asked for, which isn't really a plan. Um, so, I, I'd be happy to with, um, change my, um, I think, I'd be happy to withdraw my, my amendment and offer a different amendment, which would be to take it off the, um, agenda, um, although I think that would, um, I, I think it would be better to just, um, adopt an increment and have a discussion with...
Yeah, can you, Julia, can you explain? If you, if we adopt an increment, that doesn't mean that Miller-Nash can't charge more, in excess of two...
Well, apparently, it, it, it doesn't mean that, 'cause...
Right, right, 'cause it already happened.
'Cause they, they, they have.
It just means that we're gonna have more control and send a message.
Well, I, here, here's the thing, is if we adopt a...
It means we can't pay bills for work that we have already asked them to do.
Or, or cases that are ongoing.
Well, I didn't get the impression that it was two million dollars of ongoing work at all. I got the impression that it was, hey, we spent two million dollars last year, we're gonna spend four million dollars this year. And I didn't even support the two million. I wanted to see it go down to one million, and I wanna see some control, and I wanna see some incentive to reverse what I think are exorbitant costs, and I do wanna build in-house capacity. And I think throwing out another two million dollars for a year sends the message, you have two million dollars to spend. So, I wanna vote on it tonight. I like the amendment.
So, if I could chime in now, at this point, I think we've gone down the road. Um, I, and I think I share the goal, as I do my own organizational assessment. This is definitely a department that, um, I wanna look under the hood with. I think what, um, I can pledge to, to the board to come back with a general analysis of our existing capacity, a plan for how we move forward as a department so that this school system has the internal capacity to manage, uh, you know, the diverse kinds of, uh, issues and, and proper and effective case management that we experience. Uh, there's three dozen pages of, of existing litigation to clear up, and certainly, we wanna clear the table on those issues. And, and I think we share the goal of, if we, if we do need subject matter, content expertise, uh, from the outside, that, you know, we be modest about it and that we be diverse about who we use. So, all of those things are true, and I think, uh, you know, give me a month to do that, um, because we just did bring on a couple new team members in, in the legal department and a couple more openings that I don't wanna divert attention from making sure we identify that I think there's been a previous commitment to bring on board. Um, and, and it's true, we have some invoices now, um, that, you know, folks have performed services for, and I wanna be a good partner to those, uh, uh, organizations or firms who've done work for us, so whatever the board deems appropriate to be able to make sure we're paying our bills on time, I think is important. But I think, uh, you've all raised a very important issue, and I think this is a department that we should have clarity, uh, about sort of, um, what, what's our, what's our plan for how this department provides the kind of foundational support that it should have.
So, what, if anything, do we need to do tonight to, A, pay our bills and get us through another month?
So, the concept that, uh, the reason I came up with two hundred thousand before was, um, Jim made a, um, our general counsel made a, a compelling case that we had ongoing litigation, and so when I said, what's the increment for a month, he said two hundred thousand, so that's why we adopted two hundred thousand. So, it's sort of like a, a month-by-month payment plan. But I say, I didn't, I was unaware that, um, potentially, there was actually four hundred thousand dollars of spend happening. Um, so what I, I still think the right thing to do is just a two hundred thousand, and that gives, um, the superintendent and staff time to come back with a, a plan. Um, there's, certainly, if they provided legal services, um, that, um, we asked for, we'll pay them. Um, that's obviously the right, the right thing to do. Um, it's just, I, I'd put it in tonight, except for Jim's not here, and I, I don't know if that's the right thing to do. So, I'm, I, we still have a motion on the table for two hundred thousand. Um, I think we can come back the next board meeting if we need to clear out the, the four hundred thousand that apparently was spent, um, in addition to the two hundred thousand that the board authorized. Um, we can do that, and hopefully then we'll also have a, uh, plan going forward.
So, not to belabor this, but here's a question that was raised in the FAO committee, which is, um, so if we put that cap on this right now, then do we tell them to cease working on active cases? Like, we have a lot of grievances from our union that they're actively working on. So, if we say, here's our arbitrary cap, then they're not, then we're telling them that we don't, we don't want them to continue working on these active cases.
So, we're well within what they have, appeared to have charged on a monthly basis for labor, um, and employment-related issues. I mean, frankly, there's, um, some pretty big expenditures about, um, items which the board, um, has indicated that we want to resolve so we can move forward. And, so it just appears more money is shifting there. But I, I do think, um, I mean, two hundred thousand, you know, if you just look at the rate of spend from last year, um, I mean, two hundred thousand would be at a two-point four million dollar clip, which would be, you know, five hundred thousand more than looks like last year's entire legal budget. So, it, it doesn't seem like this is, that's, this is, two hundred thousand is a reason, I mean, that's a lot of legal services.
It's also worth noting that the budget for that department for this year is about nine hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
So, we are, we are, we are blowing through this budget.
Yeah.
And, oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Please, go ahead.
My concern remains that if we only budget for what is typically a month's work, so what about the cases that are not gonna be completed? I mean, we know the timeline of, of what things happen in the courts.
That's a great question, and we can...
That's my big concern.
In four weeks, we can extend, but it looks like, if you look at the monthly run rate, um, so if you, if you take out the, um, that four hundred thousand, uh, but if you look at the monthly run rate, two hundred thousand should be ample for...
Okay, so maybe we put in language about, you know, I wanna make sure that we're getting through all of the litigation. I mean, we wouldn't wanna pull something midstream either and give it to somebody else.
Correct.
Yeah, so I don't think this is an indication, uh, it's not a suggestion of midstream changing horses. That would be a bad, um, strategy, but it's also, we have unfortunately new cases all the time, um, and, um, those can be shifted, so it wouldn't be that we would be without legal services. And there really is, there's...
Not the question, mine is just what's existing, and ensuring that we just have a plan to let those come to completion.
So, worst-case scenario, we have a meeting in two weeks, um, and if they spend more than two hundred thousand dollars in two weeks, um, so shame on all of us, I think.
And, and we could just have a better, I mean, definitely the tenor of the conversation in the FAO meeting was that there was pretty clear direction from the board that we wanted to curtail spending, we wanted to diversify our external counsel, we wanted to, um, have a better handle on, you know, what was discretionary here. But what came to us from the general counsel was, um, about existing commitments. So, I mean, fine, we can do this, but we might, you might have a bit of a pickle in terms of how do we meet our obligations while still meeting our goals of wanting to curtail this.
I, I just would like to offer a fuller analysis. Of course, we wanna make sure and resolve whatever's on the caseload now, but I think what I, I'm hearing clearly is, we wanna make sure and find what the right level of, of, of capacity is for, for the school district. Um, so I, I just wanna be able to have an informed conversation on that. I'm very interested by that, because clearly, if, you know, if, if what we invest in that department isn't sufficient, and we're paying it out in other ways, then that's an important thing for us to think about. Um, and also, what kind of well-rounded expertise do we need in that department? Is it employment law, or is it in other areas? Um, and I think that's, that's part of the analysis that I think we should, we should do, uh, just to be thoughtful about it, while we're continuing to work with the firms that are hopefully clearing some of the cases that we're already actively engaged in.
So, we have a, um, an amendment, um, that's been moved and seconded. I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I wanna give Director R. S. Brown, I'm sorry, I didn't know that you wanted to say something.
Well, we just didn't put that language. Do we need to put the language in just to kind of close out, or then it would be revisited?
Um, yes, so, um, I'm, I'm gonna complete the vote, and then we'll add it, um, 'cause I think that's the cleanest way to do it. All those opposed? Student Representative Tran?
Yes.
Um, the motion passed, the amendment passes by a seven-to-zero vote with Student Rep. Tran voting yes. Um, and now I'd like to entertain some language that would say that, um, we will, um, have this on our, um, our board agenda, our board meeting agenda, either the next meeting, if that's necessary, or the following one, um, so that we don't, um, leave the district in a case and the situation where they, um, ongoing cases aren't resourced.
And that we will ask the superintendent for, when you said a month?
At least tomorrow.
And, I mean, we can keep going month to month until...
Yeah, till it's ready.
Yeah, and to get a really clear accounting of what is being incurred from existing litigation and where we are with diversifying our...
Do we need a resolution to that effect, or can we just say that's what we're gonna do?
I think we... Okay. Um, so, um, thank you, Director An- Anthony. The board will now vote on the business agenda as amended. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment on the business agenda?
No.
Um, all those in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed?
Yes.
Student Representative Tran?
Yes.
The vote's seven-zero, um, to adopt the business agenda with Student Rep., um, voting yes, and, um, we are now adjourned, and I'm, um, going to remind the board members, we have an executive, a short, very short executive session, um, after this. And the next...